We got it corrected.
I'd like to call this meeting the Lakota Board of Education to order. Adam, will you please call the roll?
Mr. D, yeah, Ms. Casper.
Here.
Ms. French.
Here.
Mr. Hortal.
Here.
Ms. Shad.
Here. Please turn me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your republic, which is safe and one nation, under God, in the best of all, liberty and justice for all.
We have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second, second, any discussion? Hearing done. Adam, please call the roll.
Mr. D, yes, Ms. French.
Yes.
Ms. Casper.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Shad.
Yes. All right. And with that, we turn this over to Dr. Lee.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We were just talking about, Adam and I stopped by this morning to L E A new staff breakfast. And the parking lot of the East freshman was just full. So lots of smiling faces. Great opportunity to just kind of touch base with everybody before complications. So lots of lots of new faces and exciting times. But I think it's going to be a great year. So I appreciate L E A kind of hosting that event and making sure that people kind of come together, meet their cohort, meet people in their building. I'm very definitely eager to get students back in the building. So with that said, as I promised yesterday, we have little team building. So today we're going to do another little team building activity. Hopefully, it's probably not quite as easy as yesterday, but it's nothing too obnoxious, hopefully. So I want you to think about, if you could be any animal, what would it be and why? Any animal, what would it be and why? So you have to explain your thought process. Okay. So yesterday I picked on Adam first. So Julie, I'm going to pick on you today first.
Oh, gosh. Um. Let's go with an eagle because you can soar over and see everything that's happening. And yeah, I'm just going to go there.
The high school mascot.
There you go.
Okay. Doug?
Uh, monkey. Easy. Monkeys are fun. They're crazy. They swing. Like if I could move through trees like that, like I would never touch the ground. So.
I would not have guessed that, but I like it. Okay? Isaac?
Uh, my animal, actually, if you go into my social media and everywhere, you see it right there. That is a lion.
A lion?
Yep.
Fearless. And I love to dominate my environment. Wherever I go, I want to be free. So, so lion is the animal.
Adam? Oh, Christina, I skipped you. Sorry.
I'm going to go with a puppy because I always say, if I could only have my dog's legs.
Correct. Yeah, that'd be great. Consider that. Yeah.
Yeah. Adam?
It would probably be a, uh, I'm going to go with the eagle also because I would like to be able to fly.
Sure. Okay. Callum?
Penguin. Penguin is my favorite animal. And I love how they like are just so, like, if you ever go, I love to go to the, is it the aquarium? And just watch them or the zoo where they like are on those rocks and they run and they dive into the water, they swim across, they hop back up, they just keep doing the same thing. They always look like they're having so much fun. And plus, I'm always hot and most of them live in home plant. Just saying.
I love the little African penguins at the zoo, like the tiny ones.
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh, they're so cute.
I love penguins.
They have a children's book called One Poor Friend, and that's what happens when one takes the penguin home from the aquarium. It's super, it's super scary. Normally, mine would be for like elementary children. Um, mine would be, I think mine would be a V, like a honeybee, because one, I love flowers, so you get to visit all the flowers. But two, I feel like there's a productivity to it, right? So not only do you get to see nature, but produce something, and it's very much about the teamwork of like, hi, I love you. So, yeah, although I don't like bees, I don't want them to see me or anything like that. I don't want to be stung out, but I think they're pretty from, from far. The concept is pretty. So, all right, so we've got a couple eagles, we've got a lion, we've got monkeys, we've got some fun in there. We've got the puppy who's playful, and then we've got the penguin, keeping it, keeping us cool. Right? Keeping it cool. So I love it. And so I know, um, you know, I kind of joke about kind of icebreakers, but I think that every time you can try to make a connection with a group, right? Whether that's new staff, whether that's students. Um, the other day when we were in the administrative meeting, we talked about that. Making sure that we talk to staff about how the first week, or the first days, particularly the first week of school goes for students, right? It's a really great time to set the tone, to set the energy of the building. Being a former secondary teacher, sometimes we skip that, and we want to talk about the syllabus or the textbook or the rules. And there's time for that, I believe, always. But I think that connection with children and staff is super, super important. So we talked about setting the tone for the year. So the first thing kind of on our agenda today is just that, is the 24, 25 goals. And so in your packet, you will kind of see here in two B, um, there's some color copies here for you. Looks like this. I just kind of wanted to kind of delve into that piece this morning. So this is actually just kind of a recap, and I won't go into as much detail as we did with administrators and executive team. But I kind of wanted you to see some of the foundation that we laid and kind of the tone for the year, which will lead into kind of our goals. But really, we took some time with each team to talk about how culture impacts behavior, which produces results, right? Um, and really, I think that sometimes we want to go to behavior because that's what we do, that's what we see. But culture is before that, right? And culture is that intangible, which your core values, like Christina talked about yesterday. It's your philosophies, it's what you believe, it's what's important to you. And so I think really taking the time this year to develop, maybe hone our culture, maybe shift our culture ethnically. Because what we believe is how we behave, and then that is the results that are produced. And so we talked a lot about a strategic plan, which we'll talk about a little bit too this morning. But I think really focusing on culture this year, particularly kind of where we've been, would be really important to kind of reestablish that firm foundation. You know, Dale and Kim talked about that culture is the foundation of everything. We've heard the strategy, uh, we've heard the saying, culture is strategy for lunch, right? You can put a lot of things in a culture that maybe it's not ready for, or maybe it's not healthy enough to grow in. And it's not that it's a bad idea, it just can't be nurtured though from that. So I think really the focus particularly of our semester is going to be around culture building. Making sure during those listening and learning sessions, we're listening about what's really positive in our culture that we want to keep and not lose. But then also being really open minded about where we want to go and how things might look and evolve in that culture. And then kind of depending on where we go with the strategic plan, there are some touch points that we can put along the way to kind of help transition into that. So for example, um, if you're familiar with R factor work and Focus Three, they do a culture blueprint, right? And a culture blueprint sometimes is really helpful either before a strategic plan or after a strategic plan, in conjunction with a strategic plan. To really talk about what are your core values and what behaviors are you really trying to capture and model and emulate so that you can produce the outcomes that you want? So those often work really nice in tandem together. This next piece that we looked at with, with the teams for your 20 square feet, we talked about accountability. And the accountability starts with ourselves. And so really, you have to own your own culture, your own behavior, your own actions, and your own outcomes, because that influences all levels of the organization. And I think you can change these names from student or teacher to classroom to school, to student to teacher to school. Like all of these have this ripple effect of concentric circle. And owning your 20 square feet on the day to day working really, really hard. And I think we talked about that yesterday of how we can own our 20 square feet as a board and make sure we kind of put those parameters in place that we talked about yesterday. Those basic norms that we talked about yesterday or group norms, so that we can really function for the best of the organization. And so I think this, people really understand this graphic, but living this graphic in conjunction with this takes some real intentionality, right? And it takes that accountability in those conversations of like, hey, we agreed to this, can we go back to that group norm and recalibrate? In the executive team, uh, we created group norms for all of our meetings. Um, they actually hang on the wall. And so after several meetings, we have a reflection point where we calibrate on that, where we hold each other accountable for how we're doing in those group norms. And once we kind of start the nucleus of that document that we started yesterday, I'll start drafting that. We can hold each other accountable to those group norms as well as we continue to function as a board, as an organization. Um, this next graphic is my favorite. We kind of ended part of the conversation yesterday afternoon with this. We talked about alignment a lot yesterday afternoon. And I think, um, normally when you're in R factor or work or if you're doing work with R factors, they show these two top arrows. But I really like this bottom arrow. And the reason for that is, and I think Christina mentioned it yesterday as well, when you're not aligned, you have this first arrow. Right? When everybody's not moving in the same direction. And you go, well, the arrow's pointing, there's direction, but everybody within it is still going their own individual way, right? In the next iteration of that, there's real alignment. Everybody is going the same way. Everything looks the same. That's where that conversation about are we a school system or are we a system of schools? This is, I mean, if this is where we get at progress, right? However, I really liked this next iteration because in it, there's individuality. It's not a factory, it's not a rubber stamp, it's not you're producing the same thing day in and day out. But everybody within it still has their own sense of belonging, their own sense of identity, their own sense of being. I know oftentimes when we talk about curriculum, it's a really hot topic, right? We talked about this yesterday because this is, this big box right here is the science of teaching, the how of teaching. But inside that, you can still have the heart of teaching, right? We don't want you to leave yourself at the door. We don't want our students to leave themselves at the door. So making sure that people still like that, you can have belonging and you can have alignment all at the same time, right? And so I think that's part of that culture and part of that narrative to make people understand, we're not asking for the factory arrow. We're asking for a school system that is still comprised of unique schools that all have their own unique personality and flavor and will still be aligned. Then the last one is kind of where I say the rubber meets the road, right? This is our foundation of trust. And this graphic looks very, very different, different ways depending on, you know, books that you read or educational literature. But really, in this first, first semester, particularly, probably the first year together as a team, as a board, as a district, as a community. I really think we need to, we need to focus on that bottom triangle, right, of building trust. Isaac talked about that yesterday, that trust is very important, it's critical to any organization. And in executive team, we've spent a lot of time on, um, breaking down what it means to have character or ethical trust with each other. We've talked about competence, which is technical trust, your ability, and then connection is your relationship trust. And so I really think if we can focus on those, we will achieve results. Um, sometimes, especially with maybe our report of card data, while we still have to continue to hone and work on that. Making sure that we understand the process that produces results rather than just focusing on the results itself is very important. Because results without trust does not sustain. You can have a one hit wonder, right?
Right.
Um, but we want results that will continue to grow and continue to grow, uh, not just achieve, but that grow development. And so I think you have to understand the process and what we're doing very consciously competent to produce what we're trying to do. Whether that's an HR process, whether that's teaching and learning, whether that's our communication. So again, really, this, this first year together, I, I would suggest that the 24, 25 goal particularly be to really establish a healthy culture. Doesn't mean that we're not going to do other things, right? We're going to have other goals and other, um, outcomes and tasks. But I really think it's to nurture the, the culture that we want, um, to make sure that we're, we're doing that with intentionality. Because building a positive culture takes lots and lots of work. And again, I say that word intentionality, you can't leave culture to chance. You just can't because culture is a powerful thing. And when no one's looking, in the absence of that, it kind of takes over. So you have to be really deliberate, we have to be deliberately looking at our policies. Um, and maybe some unintentional things in there, our communications, practices. Um, and that's going to take some time and effort on all of our work to make sure that we're rolling in the same direction and have that alignment. And then the very last slide that you have there, I mean, again, you're kind of getting the overview of what we kind of did together is context, context, context. Um, and I use the example of, um, I use the example of a Tiffany's box. So for those of you who are unfamiliar to the box from Tiffany's, the jewel, right? And, um, what I mean by context, context, context is when you see that box, whether we own anything from Tiffany's or not, right? When most people, when they see that box, they know what it represents. It represents quality, it represents craftsmanship, it represents class, it represents, um, um, timeless legacy, right? And the thing about it is the box represents that because what's inside the box represents that as well. The box and the product are synonymous. And so we talked a little bit about that this was not by chance, right? If you, and you can test me on this, if you go into the Tiffany's at Kenwood, the only thing you cannot buy is the box. Because the box represents something, and when you see it, it is enough to trigger all the context that comes with it. In fact, research will talk about what an iconic brand this has become. You know, there's a Pantone number that is the Tiffany blue, right? I had never thought about this, but when I was doing some research, there's a reason, I mean, the word Tiffany is actually on the box, but you're not supposed to see it. The white bow is supposed to cover it up because you're not supposed to see it. The image is supposed to be iconic enough. And what's inside it represents all of that, that branding that they've done. So I would say this is our goal for Lakota. Context, context, context. When you hear the word Lakota, see the Lakota graphic, participate with anybody in the Lakota community. We want to have a brand that represents context, context, context. It is high quality, inside and out, each and every time. And you know that you are going to get something of great craftsmanship, of great quality, and that it's going to be, that's going to speak for itself. And I know that we have some work to do in that area, right? That's why we have that media meeting greet tomorrow, or on Friday rather, to kind of start in that direction. But building that context and that culture, I really, I, I would encourage us for that to be the goal for this year. Because we've been there before, we've been that destination district, and I think with a little honing and intentionality and owning our 20 square feet, whatever that 20 square feet is in our different roles, we can certainly, certainly get there. Um, before we kind of shift gears to strategic plan, did that feel in line with what you would want the goal for this particular year to be?
It does for me. I think it's a reminder of all of that, we need to get something from Tiffany.
So I, I. She meant that she tried to buy it for everyone.
Maybe somebody is going to, that would have to be a personal purchase.
That would be Adam's side of you.
No, I, 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 I just, I agree. I think we need to, we all know that the culture needs to change and we need to be more positive. And even with all of the stuff that went on for two years, tons of things were still happening, they just never got reported because just the negative overtook. And, and you do want, I personally, I do want people to say things, Lakota across the state, across the country, oh, what a great district, instead of, oh, what a hot mess.
I really like it too. Um, I think it, it creates something tangible to really think about and touch, right? You can come back to that multiple times and say, is what we're doing going to create that, right? Are we working towards that? It's interesting because after we left last night and everyone gave their closing thoughts, I thought a lot about the story that we're telling to our community and to our teachers and to, you know, all of our, all of our staff, our administrators, and how we control that narrative. And our narrative, we talked about in this room, is finally in a positive place. That is, you know, eventually going to be results focused and driven. And I thought like, how do we, we, we control this, right? We have a PR person that controls all of these things. And I thought, you know, wouldn't it be nice if we made a social media post or a press release about the work we've done the last two days to say? You know, there's been so much negativity around it, let's control that. Let's put it out there and say, this is positive, you know? Betsy taking a picture of us working together, saying to our teachers, we decided together at this meeting that we are here to support you. We are here to work towards the same goals as you, we're here to focus on your needs. I mean, we have a, a strong message to send, and I, I really feel strongly that it's time that we start controlling that and sending those messages out and not waiting for things to be written, um, about the things that have been negative in the past. Let's focus on specifically those things and share the positive, excuse me, the positivity, just a thought. And I think that, that these district goals are working towards that, right? Right? Everything that you just said about the box and being in agreement, um, and the branding, if, if that's what we're going to own, we need to, we need to share that loudly.
And I think some of that's going to help just having Ashley in the seat, she's sitting in. Because when we were at the submarine thing, the groundbreaking submarine park, Michael Clark came up to her and was like, oh, I'd like to do a feature story. Oh, she's being here. Can I ask you five questions? And can we take a picture after she'd been ringed off in today's picture? But I mean, that's a start of getting good press for the new person sitting in the seat, and then it just evolved there. I agree with Christina. You need to be out in front of telling the story.
And that's really the opportunity of Friday is to start building that relationship, making that connection and making sure that they know, like, I'm going to send you, Betsy is going to send you. Like, we're going to be very intentional and trying to give you a more positive narrative. Because as we all know, right, it's easy to have a critical eye, um, and try and sometimes kind of get, get stuck in muck, right? But there's lots of good things, and that's for us, when we talk about social media, celebrating those qualities, highlighting the interaction with, with students or new staff. Really being deliberate and intentional about how we get those narratives there, and then working with the media also to kind of hit that restart button like Dale said yesterday. We've all, we all know where we've been. Now is a fresh start, you know, let, let's start without the linkage to the stories and all of those things. Let's just start anew. Um, and so I think we have a really good opportunity for that. And then I took that a step further with our administrators yesterday because sometimes, especially, you know, with a brand like this. Sometimes people can misconstrue this to mean a little snooty or stuffy or something like that. I, I, I don't, I didn't print it out for you, but there's a picture of Audrey Hepburn in the breakfast of Tiffany, and my favorite is she's blowing a bubble, using a bubble gum. That's kind of Tiffany blue, right? And the reason I put that up for our administrative staff is you can have fun and be, you know, have connection and be a little goofy and do those things with kids all while still having a very iconic classy representative frame. You don't have to have one or the other, right? It can be a time where you laugh and learn and play and grow together while also having a high caliber of excellence, a high standard. Um, in fact, a new teacher this morning said, oh, look at your nails, they're the color of a Tiffany box. This is a whole story in itself. It was not intentional, but, but I was like, sure, I'll go with that. It goes with context, contact, contact. So I think we have some opportunity there to really, again, spend, spend some time delving into culture, building culture. I think sometimes, like I said, when you're not intentional, people think culture just flows. And it does because it's the fabric of your organization, it's who you are. But really making sure that we do the work together, particularly through those listening sessions. And then again, we'll talk about strategic plan, um, being intentional about what our core values are and how we want that to hone and frame our work. I think will be our critical next step. So kind of leaning into that idea a little bit, we talked a little bit about our existing strategic plan. Um.
Before we go then, I had something to, I know we're moving to a next. Yeah, like, um, Christina said, I miss French, sorry. Saying, uh, it is, I love calling people by their first name, I apologize, but I have to be formal sometimes. Um, what you are saying is what has been in my mind all along, because I know that, uh, with this new, new year, it's like we're starting the new leaf. Uh, you're talking about Tiffany, what they do there is what is called a marketing rebranding. Even if you have seen that product before, you've been passing by all the time. You see that product, you're not attracted to it, but a little, uh, decoration added to it or something a little bit would attract you to go see that product. And then eventually you'll now say, you know what, let me buy this product. So that's what is called a branding. I know with this new leaf, with this new staff, I mean, new start, the expectation is they're going to start watching us. Our teachers, our staff, the community, everybody, okay, let's see, let's see what is going to happen. Because we're working now together here, we're going to go through some of the things that distracted us, like, um, you said for the past two years, there was a lot of information out there that gave us a bad name, where a branding. So what are we going to project to the public? How are they going to see us? Our teachers are going to like, okay, new leadership, new, uh, board member, uh, news pretending, now they are coming together. Everybody's going to see, should I continue like I used to be? That led to failure or going to begin to sit down, make sure the goal is met. So that is what is very, very critical for us. Looking at this picture that you gave here, we have, we're going to have from leadership to culture, now to behavior. Uh, this page at the top, we're not aligned. But in the middle, you can see that we are all focusing toward the same goal. And we shouldn't expect that at that stage, everything just be okay. That is rubber stamping. Rubber stamping, stamping progress is because everybody's saying, that's how we're going to go. That's how we're going to go. No, that is why I love the lower part, because this is where individuality comes in. We're all going to the same direction, but everybody's allowed to contribute. Everybody's allowed to bring their own perspective. That helps us now, you bring your individuality with all your different strengths. We all have weaknesses, we all have strengths. Allow you to bring that your strength, project it, so that we now align with our individuality. And then we now hit the goal. So the individuality strength gives us the energy that together, we will hit the target. And that's what I think it is. But I know as we're, as we're going to go on, there could still be things we're going to look through to make sure we take that off. To help our individuality be able to hit the goal. That's what I know.
Absolutely. So talking about that, again, if our priority for year one is really intentional culture work, right? And again, first semester, we'll talk about the evening learning sessions and kind of making sure that we, we've got all stakeholders involved in that as much as possible. But strategic plan, tell me, tell me how, tell me how you're feeling about the current strategic plan, maybe the timing, or when you would like to see the next strategic plan come to be. Um, so that we can build a timeline backwards for that and when we want to see, see that come to fruition, because that takes some time, right? Really good, um, uh, stakeholder involvement and community involvement, because again, your strategic plan is a reflection of your school district and a reflection of community values. And so my recommendation would be that maybe it's time for a new one, but I want to make sure that we all agree with that. And then really talk about a tangible timeline about when that might be in place and what that might look like, knowing that we have certain facilities, um, work to do, knowing that we have, um, some other buckets that we want to focus on, but I want to make sure that I understand kind of your vision about your strategic plan and how you might want that to come into play.
I'm just, it's past time. It's, we, it was a three or five year.
Yeah, I mean, in, in theory, it was supposed to expire during the pandemic, and then we just rolled it forward.
Right. So, yeah.
Um, it's time. But yes, I think again, that I, it's understandable why we've made the choices we did to postpone redoing that because we didn't have the bandwidth to do it with fidelity. But I think that absolutely now is the time, I can, just speaking for myself, I don't know if this is a practical timeframe. I would love to see us start next year with a fully built out strategic plan for the 25, 26 academic year. I would think that that would be feasible. And I would think that your phase one of your listening sessions right now would help inform that work as far as you're going to be able to see some of the needs, uh, to help kind of make that a second semester potential project. Would be my thought, but I absolutely do think it's, it's time. We have to put our stake in the ground and show what we're doing moving forward. And I think that is a good tool to use and to create those accountability metrics for making sure we measure. I think that is a good tool to use and to create those accountability metrics for making sure we measure. What those new stake in the ground, what what that looks like going forward.
Everybody kind of agree with that, that timeline?
Yeah, what I'll say is, I think, obviously, we're taking on a lot, but we've already taken on a lot. I think when you look at why you have a strategic plan, it's to help guide all of the work to be done. And what I also say is, I think since COVID or even before that, there's been a history of kicking the can down the road. Whether it's the master facilities plan, whether it's the strategic plan, whatever it is, right? And I think, you know. What I love about you coming in, Dr. Whiteley, is it feels like we finally have some permanence and stability in the district. And so what better time than now with you coming in to identify? What is the vision that we're gonna do, what is the strategic plan that we're gonna do, and what are the priorities? Um, I feel we talk about, you know, hey, we're at a new place, we're ready to turn the corner. This is, this is what that means, it means changing the strategic plan to align to what we've identified as the future of the district, not just living the story from. Honestly, what, two thousand sixteen, I think, was around the time that was, that was instituted, so, two thousand seventeen?
I forget when it, when was it?
Yeah, I mean, that's.
Like, yeah.
We have kids in junior high that that weren't in school when this hap- when this, uh, happened, so, yeah, I'm completely aligned to it. And how do we actually intention, use intentionality to marry that up to the guidance as we talk through things like domestic facilities, man? As we talk about student improve, our student achievement, that's right.
So I think, you know, um, Julie mentioned, I think we, that was kind of my vision as well to start. And so kind of shifting gears, if you'll, you'll take it out, um, the very last sheet that says two D that has listening and learning sessions on it, I just want to reference this. We'll kind of do the thing conjunction, um, it's called the pin to be tapped. But actually on the back, on the back, um, I had made some notes about future planning. So, again, spending the fall to really do those listening and learning sessions. And and Christina talked about yesterday, making sure we understand the purpose of things, right? What's the purpose of each, especially when you're engaging stakeholders, it's really easy for stakeholders to go, wait. What is this, what am I doing here, what is the purpose of this? So again, really being clear about that purpose piece. In that the listening and learning sessions are really just for new superintendents, right, they are for me being new in my role. To really hear from each stakeholder group about what we do well. What are our growth areas and how can the superintendent support, so it's really about my being new, okay? So a very kind of contained, short-term timeline from August to, um, December, okay? At the end of that, I will bring back to you an ethnographic report or an ethnographic study. And it's gonna be twofold, one, it will be a very kind of balcony view about what. Our, um, district thinks in those three areas, so a very comprehensive holistic piece. But then also, I want to make sure that I'm doing that, that I'm able to maybe drill down into specific groups. And give you some feedback about unique stakeholder perspectives, so for example, um. Maybe it's something that elementary parents have a growth area that we really think we should focus on. Or maybe there's something that I hear from our business leaders that, hey, that's super strength, don't lose that, right? I want to be able to pull out those various individual lenses and give you that perspective as well. Um, so again, it's that ethnographic approach of here's the whole, but if we want to drill down, we can get to that minutia as well. For very idiosyncratic groups, um, so that's listening and learning, okay? Then there's strategic planning and those, as Julie mentioned, those can flow very, very nicely into each other. Because you've already done some engagement, you've already been with folks, and then you kind of say, hey, we've done this. Now let's take that, knowing our strengths, knowing our growth areas, knowing what support we need, and then talk about our future, our future learning. So that can greet the spring semester. Right, but all the while, and this is something, again, I'll produce a timeline for us to look at that I wanted to have this conversation first. All the while, we need to overlay master facilities on top of that, right? So we can do those kind of in tandem and make sure that they're they're marrying each other. But then also, we talked a little bit about the community engagement, where do community engagements need to fit into all of that, right? Uh, because you can get a little bit of stakeholder burnout, right, when you're doing lots and lots of listening sessions and lots of, so we have to find the capacity. Of our of our folks to make sure that they engage and that they're giving us feedback and we're not tiring them out with maybe the same questions or different. Or a different avenue, so knowing that that's where we are for a strategic plan, I'll start to build that timeline for the spring. So that you can kind of see that and make sure that we're not missing any pieces. The good thing is that work is pretty fresh for me, having done a strategic plan, uh, very recently. Um, so again, kind of pulling that out, making sure that we don't just try to transpose that onto what's noted, that leaves a difference, but make sure to really get the information to be all of that. So going back to listening and learning, okay, that's what this whole document is here. If you'll just take a minute to prove this. I want to make sure, we we, uh, Betsy and I are working on dates with principal particularly. But the thought would be that there's about sixty minutes with each of these stakeholder groups. If it's a very, very large group, like maybe a community group. Or maybe a parent group, they might be ninety minutes depending on the size of the organization or the stakeholder group. But basically, we would work through these and I would have an event with each of these different groups. So the teachers, if you'll notice, is in each building separately, so I will meet with each building staff separately. The one thing I think that that I want to make sure that. Everyone, meaning building administrators, uh, you as board members, we're on the same page is. I think it's really important that people can speak very candidly in these and very openly in these. And so I'm gonna use like, like staff, um, I would not have administrators in those meetings with teachers. Because sometimes the growth area might be the administration, right? Or sometimes when we're having a, um, listening session with the community, you know, it might be, it might be administration, it might be a board situation. Or it might be something with a former superintendent, right? So I want to make sure that we provide a very comfortable setting where people feel like they can speak freely. I also want to make sure that when we set up these sessions, that people understand this is not about individual issues. It's not the time to come and talk about your child's experience with X teacher, right? This is very, very global about what we do well and what are our growth areas and how can I support you. I want to make sure we're not missing anybody, so as you look through this and this is a long list, right? And we tried to make sure that we put some, at least some gift to mention of how many people might be here. Um, I wanted to think through to make sure that there's no kind of, no stone unturned. We tried to be comprehensive, but I want to make sure we haven't, haven't missed anybody.
I think that if you're. If you're under like business partners and I don't know, Doug, where do you think optimists would fit in this, if we have rotary. We should probably include.
Should look at optimists, yeah.
They give a lot for you, uh. Um, the other thing I noticed is just. They're weird about it, not, I don't know where it is. The Westchester, it's the northern Cincinnati Community Foundation. Such is the real name and they get northern, northern Cincinnati Community Foundation. Don't ask Rob Bollman what it's called because every time he introduces that, he changes the name. Because it hasn't been, it hasn't been different names. Um, the other thing that I know is just planting quickly. Because we know how this is, if, if you're gonna have athletic boosters from the love of God, you better have a big boosters.
Yep, absolutely.
Because that will be up. And they could maybe be together.
But we might have an opportunity to separate too.
Yeah, they're both very large. I think some of the community ones you could do, like caring, community, it's like. So I think a lot of these, but some of the community ones you could combine depending on what kind of numbers. You're looking for, um. My own personal opinion. I had to take. Choose separately invite Republican Democratic leaders.
I think that whole, like Kelly, it says under community, you just, I haven't had a chance to read. It says depending on number in this group, this could be one session under the whole community, so.
I'm just saying, uh, separately, I, with way politics are to.
Oh, you think they should be?
They should not, I don't think a separate, if if they want to come under one of these other umbrellas, I just don't know about separately inviting them, but maybe.
I think she's wanting to do the whole community. Section would be.
Section fire, all that would be together, now, again, we, uh, there's, this is not gonna be RSVP, right, this can be. So it'll be one of those moments where, um. I I I would prefer to be the only person in the room, but you and I talked about that as well. She goes, it's really big, can I be there as a note taker? We might get there, right? Um, again, I just want to make sure that it seems like a very intimate, one-on-one conversation. I am here to hear you and support you and capture what you think to the best of my ability. But if there is a crowd that is quite large, we might, I might have to have a note taker in there. Um, again, the expectation would be for you not to. For none of you to attend.
Yeah.
Because, again, I think it's about that comfort level and being able to be transparent in your feedback, and I promise you, you will get that feedback. Um, at the end, once we've done that report, and I can drill down as much as you would like, once we do that report. Um, I just wanted to make sure before we put dates and we start advertising dates that we had not missed anybody. Because if there's any big layering group or anything that'll sway it one way or the other, I wanted to make sure to capture that. So continue to, continue to marinate in this, you don't have to have an answer for me today on this. But I would say maybe by the middle of next week, if you, if you think anything that's missing or if you see a group pad like you had. If you could let me know that, again, kind of, you know, start as foolish, I just want to make sure to have these, have these captured, um. The other thing, uh, we will advertise these everywhere in the subs of the website. Um, I'll put these on social media as celebration, I think it's a celebration anytime people can come together and speak. Uh, but also I will be, um. I will be writing personal notes, particularly to some of these groups, like community members or business advisor, uh, or business leaders. Should they, I want you to make sure that the date is on your calendar because I think your voice is really important. Um, so, um, we've got a list, I think I asked for fifty, a list of fifty key community members, and I got one with a hundred and twenty-five. So I'm gonna be busy now, note writer, um, but that'll be a good opportunity just to also make that connection. We talked about trust and making that connection, and I know we could use email. But I think a personal note goes a long way to say, hey, I would love to have you there and I would love your voice to be there. Um, I can't do that to the whole community, I wish I was that, 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 had that ability. But I think just making some really deliberate and intentional connections with some of these groups. Uh, and then also some of these groups have already reached out and said, hey, can we meet with you separately? Absolutely, right, absolutely, um, like I know I have one with lead set up, like I had one recently with my DPC that I told you about. So this doesn't mean it's just a one and done, but this is an opportunity to make sure that the larger scope, um, can come to the table and kind of be part of that voice.
So I see like these specific stakeholder groups, but would they're all, would. That include those are, people are getting a specific invite, but then would there be an open invitation with what you're speaking about with the publication? Okay.
So for, like, I'm just thinking, like, sometimes business leaders particularly, or people that aren't checking social media or aren't checking the website, we just don't want to lose anybody.
Right.
So making sure that, you know, whether it's to the organization as a whole or anything, go to, hey, I just want to make sure that you have this date on your, you know, save the day. Share it with, share it with your stakeholders, share it with members of your group, if you can't come, give it to your neighbor, right? We would just want to make sure that everybody has the opportunity. And I'm very, you know, I'm also aware, anytime you talked about statistically relevant groups, right? That's the beauty of ethnography, right, is not, we're not doing, we will give a survey so we have some point of take of data as a, as a cultural stake. Leveling, uh, but the beauty of ethnography is that, you're right, there might be a parent who's also a teacher, who's also a business leader. Right, but the beauty is in the number that we will see, that the bigger things will rise to the top and we will be able to kind of filter that out. About what are our strengths, what are our growth areas, and then how can I be a best support to each of these groups?
Um, one of the things, I I know you're looking at, I can tell from the document, but I think. I would encourage some intentionality around the PT SOs, MPTA groups, um, and and the way that I want to describe it is. They're, you know, having volunteers that we all have in the VPS, there's a core group, right? That does, you know, that 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 leads so much of that volunteer work, and a lot of that is overlapped with DPC or with the president's council. I think there's a big opportunity and it's kind of frozen some of the discussions that we've said, had from a community age at the same point. PT SOs have trouble getting the rest of the organization, the rest of the parents to 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 show up, like, understand. I think you coming in is a great opportunity to leverage that to help the PT SOs. Reach a broader audience, so again, I understand there's twenty-three schools, but especially like the ECS and elementary, there's a flow through there. It's easy to get to them at one time or order them, but think through, is there a way to get beyond that core PTO group to the parents? That should be part of the PTO, but not necessarily attend every meeting and stuff, if that makes sense.
Yeah, and we've actually talked about that, so, uh, I will be meeting probably with each, um. Each, each PTO or parent group, but then again, extending that to get beyond that core. And I think I continue to iterate and brainstorm, how do you get the unheard voice to the table? Right, I think that is, I mean, like you said, you have the people who always show up every time, we know they're gonna be there, and I love those folks, right? They're the fabric of our community, but it's also the person who's like, that doesn't work with my local schedule or. Um, we talked about, um, how to best communicate with our ELL teams, right? How do we make sure that we have a listening session where they feel that they can engage and then communicate their. So I think it's really a combination of, um, advertisement, intentionality, and really thinking outside the box in some ways. And again, if we notice in this, the beautiful thing is it's not set in stone, so if we start these and we go, hmm. I heard a really interesting narrative there that I think we need to pull out and like do a, do a separate in with a very smaller group, can do that. Because sometimes that does happen, you hear a narrative and you go, hmm. Didn't quite expect that one, and I need to dig at that a little bit to be able to make sure that we have a true understanding of that. So I'd say there'll be a couple more that we'll add along the way as we iterate through this, but again, feedback on this. Multiple, multiple groups have looked at this, and every time I look at it, we always go, oh, don't forget that, or oh, don't forget that.
And I have another one, which is, uh, we, we get so much support from them, but we don't necessarily reach out to them all, is the veteran groups. So BFWs, American Legion's, um, I think is a great chance to engage them and be more intentional, intentional.
I've heard this a lot too, and I just wrote down a, do we have a specific seniors in the community, which maybe could even hit that turn side? Or grandparents, we have parents, maybe a grandparents section.
They meet the boys and girls club.
Yeah.
School year, so you come and they meet here, Friday.
I was telling you, with parking planning, parking planning confirmed for me what a community we have. And I joked about this with someone separately in our interactions, but I mean, it was a family affair. Like grandparents were there, parents were there, people were like, hey, my kid did this camp and they're super ball, so I gotta get the base down. So they, I mean, it was, uh, the best setup was at West, when a family had the Jeep in the back open. Like the whole family was there, the grandma, the grandpa, the mother, daughter, um, and his father and the, the Jeep had a big fan. It had misters. So if you, and again, all of this is my weekly update about just reminding you and I'll link this, but again, if we're missing anybody, please let me know. And we'll get dates for this, we're making a master meeting calendar, if Melissa would hear, she would joke. I made the mistake early on of saying, hey, did you have a calendar with all of the dates, um, on it, and she kind of looked at me like. Yeah, twenty-three buildings, what do you mean a master meeting calendar? So it's evolved from one tab into three tabs, right, and we have a district one. Um, then we'll have a building one that has all the building, the L team, and the building, the parent groups thing, and then we'll have one that's listening and learning as well. So I'll make sure that we, when we get that finalized, we share that with you as well, just so you have it correct. All right, um, before we move on to evaluation, any questions about kind of goals, so our district goals, our culture? Strategic plan definitely for the spring semester going into twenty-five, twenty-six. I think I wrote down, although it would probably be a next iteration of that, the metrics of how we're, we're gauging that and how we're making sure we're successful in that. And then also getting those listening and learning sessions, um, under way so that we can start the, start the engagement with the community. So next thing, uh, for topic is superintendent and treasure evaluation, just want to make fun, I know I haven't stepped out. Yeah, maybe, maybe, um, wanting to make sure that we're just on the same page, um, kind of with those people. So I didn't know, can you talk to me about our current practice with superintendent and treasure evaluation? Maybe the case in which we do those, the tool which we use, is that a whole more activity, specific board number? Kind of talk me through what our current practice is with that.
Um, I'd say we've had different processes over the years since I've been in the board. Um, I'll say, last time I was president years ago, like we had a formal process, we used, um, OSBA had. We used OSBA had specific metrics, we went through that. Since then, we've evolved into different iterations where it's been more of a meeting to set goals, a mid-year checkpoint, and then we kind of finalize that in the end. But it's been, all of those have been whole board activities with one person. At times, we've written up narratives, at times we have not. It's all been verbal. But I think we have a huge opportunity to use a different tool. And we've talked at different times about using the OSBA tool or, or different tools we brought forward, like what Butler Tech has done. So there's, I think, a lot of opportunity for growth there and to formalize that versus the current goal setting process that we have, would be my takeaway.
Yeah, we need, in my however many years, it has been kind of like a free fall. There's and it is important, I think it's important, but it's, okay, here are my goals. And then at the end of the year, okay, here I did everything. But there's not really a check-in and there's not really a metric, I guess, behind it. And Adam didn't have to make a conversation in finance, that was one of his goals, so.
I mean, my, my observation coming in is, looking at what was in place at the time I came in, a lot of the a lot of the evaluation was based on activity and not results. And there was a lack of specificity around it. So I, I agree. I think there's a lot of opportunity. One, and what is the framework on how we provide consistent evaluation over time? But also, how are we making sure that what we are outlining from a performance standpoint is aligned to the goals that we're talking broadly? And I think there's opportunity there.
And I feel like part of that is because we have not had a robust strategic plan
Right, yeah.
to kind of measure against.
Exactly.
That if we're able to align those two, that is going to be critically important. And again, when we first did the strategic plan, we made attempts at doing that. But as we know, our strategic plan was so broad and nonspecific that it made it hard to have it be actually black and white versus more anecdotal of what does achievement look like in each of those areas.
That makes sense, because me too, since I came on the board, I've not I was wondering when we did, we did evaluate, I think I've done that. For superintendent, I, I, for, for, for the treasurer, it's very because of some of the activities from outside, the commissions from the state, that makes it a little bit easier. But for the superintendent, I'm like, okay, what am I going to base my my evaluation on? Is it, is it on performance? If you're going to go by the performance, no way I'm going to say the superintendents have really, really achieved. But we didn't also say that they did not achieve as well, because it was all over the places. So I think if the strategic plan is narrowed and specific and easier, I mean, clear, we can use that to evaluate.
I think we need some sort of framework. We've just basically been waiting it.
Yeah, she, I'm thinking she's got some right there.
So funny you should mention, yeah. And I didn't want to, because again, I know, you know, I mean, I've, I've got our column, even there in your folder, about how you evaluate superintendent, how you evaluate the treasurer. But they're very kind of global in nature, right? So I think first and foremost, it's kind of like a principle of building an administrator evaluation. You set goals, right? I'm going to use the word smart goals, very specific, measurable, actionable, attainable, time sensitive. And when you have a strategic plan that has metrics, then your life becomes very unique, because you're just working towards that. So we're going to be in a little bit of a transition this year if we don't have that kind of finalized strategic plan. But that doesn't mean we can't do something still with Fidel, right? So making sure that Adam and I will set up a time to make sure we talk about our goals, making sure they're smart goals, making sure there's clarity around those. And I think sometimes those are action oriented, and then sometimes you also have results. But action oriented can still be result. What do you expect to be like culture, right? Culture, again, very abstract, but you can put some tangible things around that to be able to help measure that, or to be able to see the, how we're moving the needle in that area. Check, so checkpoints, I love that you said that there's some formative pieces of that, right? One of the things talking about we're building administrator to executive team is that feedback is important. We can't wait till the end to get that feedback. It has to be ongoing. It has to be sometimes very short and very specific, but sometimes it's more global in nature. I'm also learning, I have a meeting with Mr. Visage later in the week. Some, you know, I know we're talking about master facilities, but feedback to even our support staff, cleanliness of our buildings, the functionality of spaces, child nutrition and giving feedback, and making sure that there's, and I go back to process, right? Trust is built on a process that produces results. You can't just say, we want the building to look clean.
What are the
What does that mean, right? What does that mean? Do we have a checklist? Do we have a tool? Does everybody working in that alignment? So really making sure that at the end of the year, even some of those very small things, that we have real alignment on that, you know, head of maintenance, Mr. Visage, the building administrators, myself, when I walk in a building, all of our staff know this is our goal course, right? This is what we want to make sure that when we say we have a clean building, this is what we're expecting, right? And then there are some non-negotiables, right? Like in a building of restaurant doors or safety, but there are some things that, from your building principal days, and we talked about this, right? Everybody's standard is not always the same. So being clear about what that standard is and giving feedback about how we're reaching that or not reaching that, I think will be critical to our success. So I think one of the things, one of the beauties about a superintendent tool or treasurer tool is that there is an abundance of resources that we can kind of review to see which ones we prefer, right? Some of them are very narrative based, meaning that they might be based on the job description, one that we kind of pick apart and then you kind of write narratives about. Some of them are very rubric based, and very, very specific in their language. Some of them are, I mean, that's a doozy, or that's, that's a thick one, right? So I think we have to, one of the things we talk about in the evaluation world, and I used to be in charge of evaluation, is meaningful and manageable, right? It has to be meaningful, but it also can't be so clunky that you can't get your head above water, right? Or you're like, oh my gosh, I'm drowning in this language. I don't even know what to put here. So why don't Adam and I, as we're setting up, we'll set up those goal meetings. We'll bring some tools that maybe we think are like some top echelon of tools about that we think are being more manageable, and then we can pick from there. And we'll build kind of a timeline of when we can do that feedback together and make sure we get that formative feedback. How's that sound?
I would also recommend too, once we get through that part of the process, we take these policies, the superintendent treasurer evaluations back to policy.
Yeah.
Because just on, just on the glance, we have some items that are within our contracts that just don't align time. So we need to update that as well. But until we get this part done, that's what will lead this.
Right, perfect. Also, and perfect, I'm, I'm kind of, I might be thrown out of our group, because we haven't talked about this. I think it might also be nice for Adam and I to have a collaborative to get the treasurer and superintendent, because we are, we are a team, right? And so I think anytime you're working towards a common goal and the whole day going accountable, you're requiring that communication and requiring that effort. And I think there's some things that we're getting ready to embark on, you know, whether that's master facilities, whether that's strategic planning, that you're making sure we're in line on the goal. That I think that really creates a narrative of like, hey, we are, are working together from the financial end of fiscal responsibility to the day-to-day work of teaching, finding, common cultural. I think that's a nice narrative to build in our evaluation, that we grow together. Right? And that was one together. So we'll kind of think on that and see what that might look like as well.
Yeah, that didn't throw me a loop at all. I think that's just, I think that's just necessary.
Absolutely, absolutely. Anything before evaluation, before we move on to evaluation?
Yes.
Yeah.
I have something on evaluation. This is, this is a trick, we're trying to say, make sure we get past our mistakes and move forward. I, I strongly believe that, this is my personal opinion, an observation that our past successes, the district as a whole, performance, the grades and everything, the board had too much interference with, of, of regional administration. I, I want to cite an example. The superintendent and the treasurer supposed to guide us towards the goal. So if we can, as board, we said this before, but I want to make it clear. If they bring us a plan, whatever it is, I want to plead, I'm myself inclusive, take away the emotion. Take away like, this person is going to either lose their job, that person is going to do that, or maybe I know the person, I don't know the person. If the plan came, because that is what the superintendent is saying, or that's what the treasurer is saying, that is going to lead us to goal, I would plead to conserve and to my fellow members. Let's look at it critically and see the policy around it and make sure that we allow that to go, instead of bringing our own emotions into it. Because I know the human part is there. But the, the thing is that we have a target to hit, and we have a goal. So releasing the superintendent and the treasurer to go and bring us what it is, look through it and let them roll. It's what I'm going to plead that we do. Because I saw that in, in the past that we tried to interfere.
And I think making sure that we have that document, that we talked about the building norms, you know, kind of in sample, kind of Julie's air, we said we would start our own of that. I think, I think that's going to be really important to kind of ground us in our work and hold each other accountable, right? So if we kind of get, I think if I'm more of a bowling, that would not be my Olympic sport, right? I'm horrible at it, because that would be the bumpers up the entire time I go into the other line and everything else. That when we get a little off kilter, that, that document and those discussions can be captured there so that we can go, hey, remember, kind of out of our twenty square feet, you gotta kind of bring it back, right? So I think that'll help. And I'll start drafting that. Again, it won't be, it won't be that beautiful document maybe that Julie gave us, but we can have that difficulty as that we continue to build on. And I also think, you know, I think when you have the journey of a strategic plan conversation, your core values, just that they're part of that conversation, and that can help create some group norms too, about, like we talked about, how do you value student achievement? How do you make sure that that's at the forefront? How do you make sure that's part of that big conversation? So with that, we're working through our agenda good, at a good pace this morning. I think let's take maybe like a five minute break. If you need to grab some fruit or some granola, we can take a restroom break. We'll just take about five minutes.
All right.
Thank you.
Ten on five, ten ten.
Ten ten. All right. Um, the next item kind of on the agenda there is Butler County Educational Service Center. Uh, back in July, I think it was July, maybe it was June, I think it was June actually. We had, they were having the, um, end of the year superintendent meeting of Butler County, which I attended. And then we have one next month, uh, in September, August being the down month because of the starters of school. We had talked about some things in, in June that I wanted to just put on your radar, get your thoughts on. Um, particularly because of the timing of the presidential election. So one of the things, um, that we'll probably talk about as a group in September, is just making sure we review our policies on presidential elections and how government issues and things like that, political issues, um, or policies we have in place on that, and making sure that we really, uh, equip principals and teachers with understanding that, right? Because sometimes it's just a lack of knowledge or a lack of understanding about what the policy says, and what that really means in your twenty square feet, particularly with children. So I think it will be a good time, um, to review that, review those with presidential elections. Um, so that'll be like in September or so for us, but. Butler County Educational Service Center, we had just talked about how public education particularly had been under attack in recent years, and that really working hard, um, superintendents, boards of education, making sure that our legislators understand what we do. Right? Um, and then oftentimes, we hope that the legislators and the policymakers really have an understanding of what we do, because sometimes the laws that they make with policies that they enact have a bearing on us, but maybe they don't fully understand, right? Twenty square feet, right? So you know your twenty square feet. So with that, um, Butler County superintendents had discussed being really deliberate in making sure that we invite, so that the, the goal was to invite the legislator into your building each month. Now, based on the, what they had shared from, uh, previous superintendents of Butler County, some were already doing that, except they make the invites, but nobody ever comes, right? Uh, or they, they extend the invitation, they accept the invitation, and then last minute, and then comes up and it's canceled. So I don't think we've had really good results, you know, I think you talk about results and metrics. I think the invitations are being sent, but we don't get a lot of traction on our end. But I wanted to make sure we're comfortable with, um, because I think we're all supposed to be bringing a plan back to that Butler County Educational Service Center meeting for superintendent in September. Are we comfortable with inviting legislators in as many as possible each month, making sure that's a diverse group? Making sure, I already have one reach out to me who's eager to just meet, be part of, be part of the new work that we're doing in the district. So I think it's a good time just being new, again, to extend that listening and learning to our legislators, invite them in and make sure that they're very seeing very firsthand what public education looks like, what our teachers experience, and maybe being able to just get a little bit of insight when they're thinking about a policy or legislation, about what that might look like in the day-to-day real world and action in a school building. Um, so with that, I'll kind of, um, be working to make sure we extend, we send those invites out pretty regularly. I will let you know if we ever get any acceptance, um, which building that they'll be in. Um, but I also wanted, you know, I want us to be aware that we'll be doing that at the same time as a presidential election and making sure that people understand purpose, right? Right? It's not about a political aspect, this is about legislators being in our building to understand public education, so that they can make informed decisions, whatever their political psyche, um, comes, um, in their role, right? Versus, we will review policies for a presidential election about what we do. Practices, um, within the classroom during, um, political issue. Does that sound okay with you? So with the conversation, uh, we didn't land, we didn't finalize it as it went, but it was almost like the legislator could be like a principal for a day, or really see what it's like to make, you know, a thousand split decisions, or to have best life plans go awry when there's a student issue. Um, I think we're still wrapping our heads around what that might look like, and I don't know if every legislator would. Uh, but we might be able to do some like maybe smaller scale things like that to really see what it looks like. You know, I compare a secondary. Yeah, to be a teacher, right? I was having a conversation this morning with the new staff member, you know, being in a secondary classroom, being in a primary or elementary classroom is a very, very different experience, right? Um, I joked with the teacher this morning, um, you know, my experience in the second freshman, freshman and seniors, all the way through. Um, and during COVID, they, we needed to sub, right? And they put me in kindergarten classroom, um, to be a sub for two weeks, because the teacher, the teacher was ill. And by that time, I've been a high school principal, everything, I'm gonna say what? A kindergarten teacher is hard stuff, I got to die. Right? I mean, I was reading the less planned life, right? So in the first twenty-five minutes, we are crisscrossed, half across, and then I made it to the very end of the day, and I had on my heels, I had my heels, my feet are killing me, I'm making, I got, I got, I gotta make it twenty minutes, right? Oh gosh, getting the kid on the right bus, make sure they get home. I was like, get me, like, get me out of here, I have to go back to being a high school principal, this is rough, right? This is rough, but I'll never forget this little kid looked at me, with his big eyes, he goes, I'm a walker. I was like, I, I don't think you are, like, you're so tiny, there's no way you're a walker. He goes, she named him Miss Ma, right? His mom showed him. Um, so I say that because I really do think having our legislators come in and see, just really see each public education in the day-to-day, I think would be super helpful, so.
I completely agree, because, uh, it may be in the past, they have not been involved. It's like the school district, they are just operating like their own closed door, without them knowing. So maybe that would have increased the, the noise that is out there. They are the ones in the community, leader, leadership in the community, if they are engaged, informed, probably most of their, during their campaigns, things come up, no, that's not true, I've been to that school. I've been there, I've seen it, what I, what I say, give me everything, you know? So I think it's a good idea.
And I think that's exactly what we talked about, so that when something comes up, whether it's their idea, their association, whatever, they can actually say, actually, I was out in code of the schools and it didn't look at all like that. Right? And I was out in code of the schools, and while that might be a good idea, let me, let me tell you what that might look like in practice, that might be a little. Um, so I think it's really just opening that narrative up, um, and really being advocates, as we all are, for public education, and making sure people understand the narrative around that, which is, so those, those are probably starting in September.
We can get in there, yeah, because in the past, we have them fighting.
I'm gonna use my newness and tactic, hey, come and meet me, and you, you know, we can get those things together.
And I think too that it's important, and like you said, as we explain that we're inviting them in because they're the legislature and it's public education, and it's not, I think that also needs to pay career to the legislators as they come.
Absolutely. I also, Butler, I'm sorry.
I, I'm just saying, in the past, we have heard things from legislators about what Lakota wants that isn't accurate. So I just think it's.
And I think there's a, sorry.
No, 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 go ahead.
I said, I think there's also an opportunity, regardless of whether they're in our schools or not, is how do we arm them with, you know, our priorities from a, from a legislative standpoint that we'd like to see or, or positions. I think we've tended to not engage with them on issues before they are voted on. And I think there's an opportunity to say, you know, for us, here's our priorities of how we think through. And I think there's been some examples of legislation that's passed through recently on the state that has brought to allow the flexibility that the difference between a Lakota district and a rural district, and the different, um, safety concerns that are going well with that, right? But until we were able to articulate different needs, there wasn't that space that was created. So I think there's, there's an opportunity there that regardless of visits, we can do a better job engaging.
And to the same kind of line as the business, I'm thinking, just hearing that, that it would be good for me to get with some of the legislators to have them come in and take a ride around the districts, so I can talk about some of the property value issues that I can say, you know, actually show examples of, you know, some of the issues that I've brought up.
And Butler Tech has had good success with this, and it's interesting to me because I feel like it's become politically correct to support career tech without realizing that a vast majority of our students are going to be going through the public school system, and we're doing that same preparation work often in just, it, it looks a little bit different. So just because it doesn't have the title of career tech, we are still preparing these kids for their careers, whatever they may be. And so I don't know if there's any way to partner with Butler Tech to kind of do a combined typical public schools and vocational schools, when you do these visits or try to organize a that at the ESC level.
I mean, you said it Julie, because, you know, Butler Tech is at the table, and that's me, and said that exact same thing. Is that I don't understand why, but we have much more success in this area. Um, and so almost, it's like you said, can we get the timing right, when we're in the morning, one place, in the afternoon? Or could we, um, almost, almost have a, um, like a regional aspect of, you know, you get on the bus and you go from Middletown to Lakota to Butler Tech to, to Rock Ross, whatever it may be, to really see the differences of scale, rural versus urban versus urban. So I think we, we were really brainstorming on that about how do you get them there and capitalize when they're in that region all at the same time? Because they, they have had a very successful model. Um, and sometimes it's because of the, um, finances or the resources available at Butler Tech, maybe. Yep. So I think, I think really partnering to do that, and I think that's why, talking about that aligned and arrows, right? We all know we're different schools, we have different needs, but really having a cohesive plan as a region, um, really Butler County, to say, how do we get you here to really hear the names of public schools? I think that's what we're looking towards in that one thing, as has Butler County.
And there was a time, and I'm gonna forget the name of the group that we were part of, the.
The League of Innovated State.
Um, where there were bus tours that both Lakota did and Middletown did, where they went from school to school. And I'd been in an event that Middletown had invited everyone at this event, so I went to Middletown's. It was amazing, like going from school to school and seeing what they were doing. So again, I think doing something like that, kind of what we've talked about, rebranding our business advisory council. I think all of that has an opportunity to educate not only our legislative folks, but our business folks as well.
I think something like that, if we do that, I do think it's very valuable in having us there on the days that they.
Absolutely.
We were not invited even based what Lakota wanted.
That's a good point.
So we'll start sending out those invites, hopefully we'll get a little RSVP, and then we can, we can figure out how to capitalize against the moment. Um, conference attendance, so a couple things, let's start with OSBA, because that's the most timely. We had talked a little bit about this, um, OSBA is in November, um, as you know. Um, we had talked about the opportunity, uh, who's going to be an attendance, and I know that that's a little different over the past, and who's gone to that before. Um, there was a discussion about, um, executive team going. Two-fold, one is that culture work, being intentional, making sure the executive team has some time, the board members, um, you know, just being in communion together, whether that's over a meal, or learning. There was also, I call it designated survivor, right? You've got to have somebody that, that's, that's on, boots on the ground, right, in case of a situation. And so some, there would be one team member probably that would stay back, um, in that situation, just to make sure. I didn't know if you had thoughts with preference about attendance for executive team members, could be a portion, could be all for OSBA, or past practices, we all should be aware.
I'd say in the past, many have come, we have not been involved in those discussions or decisions, but just having seen them there, I think it would be nice if we had an opportunity for team building with the whole team again for alignment and making, but I, in my opinion, that would be up to you as it has in the past.
Uh, my perspective coming in, um, was very impressed with the breadth of subject areas that were covered at OSBA. And I think, uh, instead of acting as a telephone, a game of telephone relaying information, like I sat on one that was about, uh, the retail certification for graduation. And I was like, ah, I wish the executive team was here to see this firsthand, and, and I have to like translate that. So I think beyond the culture work, having them have the same visibility, and then also with more boots on the ground, it gives us ability to, to strategically cover more subject areas. Um, instead of, you know, all like, oh, we're only dipping our toe on some of the subject areas, and it's true.
And it's my understanding, the fee for entry like goes away after five people. It's like, you pay for the first five and then it's free attendance for anyone after that or something, like, as I recall.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea if they participate in sessions, so.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure before we, you know, that busy season where you have to log on to get all of the rooms and the rest.
I was gonna say, we get rooms first.
And all of that, uh, so, and again, we had, we kind of, we talked about it as an executive team, um, and there have been kind of some history and some new fresh ideas that were brought to the table. And so I wanted to make sure that we married those appropriately, the kind of revision, uh, whether that's culture work or boots on the ground, and just how many sessions can we get to, right? And I also think, you know, we're talking about strategic plan, facilities, um, lemmies, things like that. The more people that can be involved in that and really gathering resources, that might help, that might help us divide and conquer, right? Just to have.
Oh my god, I love funny rooms.
Before going into, if there can be some intentionality, how do we think through these conference presentations? And who do we want and which rooms and stuff?
I am accustomed to kind of like you said, reviewing that itinerary together first, so that nobody's duplicating, or if there is a duplication of like, hey, you're looking at it from technology, and you're looking at it from facilities. Um, and then almost having like a Google Doc, where we capture all of our wonderful thoughts while they're fresh, so that we're all working towards the same lens, instead of having to polish that all together.
That's something we've done as well, when more of the members go, we look at the agenda and say, who's going where and what? What do we need to make sure we're covering?
So they cover the right, their, their area of expertise, not, yeah.
Um, the other piece is, are there some conferences, um, that you would like to regularly attend as a group? So for example, um, the one. I want to make sure that we just have, we're, we're aligned in the conferences that we would like to attend, attend with the wealthy. That being the only one?
Go ahead Julie. I guess, uh, historically, we've gone to NSBA until Ohio split off and did COSBA, and now we've done COSBA two years. First, like, I was hoping it would be a growth opportunity and they'd get there, but like, when you look at just, for example, the vendor fair of all the opportunities. I mean, there's more vendors at OSBA than there were at COSBA. And there were a lot of repeats of the, um, session. So I almost felt like OSBA had better sessions than COSBA did. But when I went to NSBA, I felt like theirs were the best sessions that we had the opportunity to see. So I don't know if, in my opinion, COSBA has the most value, or if we want to explore if there's others that you are aware of or know of, that gives us a broader perspective than Ohio, which I think is valuable, but actually has more breadth and uniqueness in their delivery.
Yeah, I, I, I would, I would prefer that we give NSBA, and I don't know what that looks like, because initially, they were saying if your state was not in NSBA, NSBA, you couldn't come, but then I heard they're trying to get people to come back. So I don't know what that looks like, I, I, I don't, did not feel that COSBA would work. The amount of money that it cost to send us there, for the same reason, it's a lot of repeat. There wasn't a huge vendor fair, we were in the middle of nowhere. Um, but I feel like there was more value the years we've gone NSBA. I, I was hoping that they could get their acts together and go back to one, but that doesn't appear to be happening.
Yes, I don't know what NSBA may be depleted at this point, because it's been split in two, so I, I don't know if either of them have.
Well, that's why I said, I think, yeah, for me, give it another chance, and then it's, it's to see what, yeah.
My personal opinion is, for the fact that Ohio is not part of NSBA, pull out for a reason, I, uh, we've had more than, more than enough fare of all the interference where we are on OSBA, and now we're pulling back on NSBA. I will never, I don't want us to think about going to NSBA right now. If Ohio, as a state, gets back to it, and being a member, that makes a little bit more sense than going, bringing that, that, that back to our, where we are right now, we've had more than enough distractions in the past. Let's not go take anything out of this, that it's not even approved by the state into, into Lakota right now.
I, I approach it differently, I'm, I'm worried about like, why are we spending this time and investing money in, in whatever activities we're doing? Um, I honestly don't care what the state decides to do with associations and all that, that's for them to figure out. For me, it's where can we maximize the return on our investment of time and energy? And, and, and again, from COSBA, my experience was, the best sessions were presented by people from OSBA. And I was like, whoa, we could get that in, in Columbus, and, um, there wasn't the depth of, um, of, of the, the breakout sessions were, were duplicative. There were same people representing the same thing with a different title, you know, several times. So it wasn't worth the time investment. And then I noticed too, where COSBA macroly is focusing are on issues that aren't as relevant to a district like us. And so especially the things that we didn't participate in in the first two days that were before that, like really interesting material from an education standpoint, but just not applicable to where we are as a district. And so I don't see the, the alignment with a, with a COSBA. But again, if I can get information or learning or knowledge, I don't care about the association, I just want to maximize what we get out of it.
Yeah, I, I, that makes sense, yes. I think that makes sense, because if we fail, but, but when I went to COSBA, this, this past COSBA, I learned, I learned from it more than the previous one, and I think it's a new association that we're on, but if we're not getting anything out of it, why go for it?
And I think the, the, the way that, for me, the way that this, that they split was, I think personally, twenty people decided that we were gonna, that Ohio was gonna leave NSBA based on whatever the letter was written about them. I would have liked to have seen, and I said this at the time, the twenty people that are OSBA trustees made the decision without any input from the six hundred school districts and the thousand board members, there wasn't a survey monkey, there was nothing, it was some, somebody sent a letter from NSBA, and the next day, if Ohio had a meeting, we pulled out, so. Again, to that point, I agree, I, it doesn't matter to me what the state association does, it's what we as a board get out of the conference.
Because you know, in a three-year timeline, we've got three new board members, a new treasurer, and a new superintendent, you know? So I think as. You know, so I think as we continue to develop the trust, we continue to develop as a team. Yet like this, this hadn't been a big investment financially, but this, I feel like is a huge return on that investment of our time. Working together on this. So I think as we keep evolving, we're going to be able to see how we can. Get where we need to be as a district and as a team better, on which conferences or which activities we want to spend more time in.
And there is something to be said for. The, the national conferences and the things you get from other states. But to me, the, all of the conferences are as much about team building as they are of content. We're out of the district. We have an opportunity to have some camaraderie. We still learn something. But we, you know, we have the ability to have dinner together and we have the ability to do something at night or walk under a highway. But we, you know, we have the ability to. With the motorcycle gang. Um, for me, that's as important, especially like you said, now we have a, a, a new superintendent.
Yeah.
Two new board members.
Yeah, my, so, so just to give you a little bit of what I say, I would have, I would have the only, only board member left if what happened. But open the bottom line is, it gives us opportunity beside where we're getting from the, the conference itself. To bond, have more time, it, have this, I mean, just network and know each other personally. Because this, this right here, I'm sorry, I, 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 that's happy. This right here, very, very. This one. So how do we align, not going there to have board meetings. But we talk about personality that help us now to know the individuality that help us align our goals. So I'm just saying it from the sensitivity of whatever happened in the past, Lakota has gone through too much of this. Then you're pulling down now, people are beginning to say all kinds of things. For me, COSPA gave us opportunity to do that. My personal opinion, let's still stick to it. If it is not benefiting of them. But bringing it on NSBA here, I think it's great. I'm not the, I'll, that's where I'm staying.
Can we all perhaps leave it where we're open to exploring even something that's not either of those? If there's something that we think would align.
Exactly.
And give us more, you know, I feel like there's so many different conferences with so many different focuses. I think I personally would like to see what the past.
We have the board's experience fund, but, but we've never, as in my, as a team, said. How can we best utilize this fund to get the most return for the district?
I was just gonna say, I've gone to quite a few national and state administrator conferences and there's always sessions for school board. Always.
That's something to really, you know, think different.
Just fine. Cause I, I actually had mentioned, I didn't get to do it last year, but I had mentioned that I wouldn't mind going to like a superintendent conference because. I get so many different angles because so many of the things that I see are very, very similar. It's almost theme-based, you know? Where if I can go to those, helping me support the team can have a huge value for Lakota.
Right.
The national superintendent conferences tend to be very, we're thinking, very innovative. Um, again, always Christine has said, there's definitely some sessions for, um, you know, non-supreme superintendent board members and executive team members. Um, so that might be something that we'll do now. So why don't we do a little homework and just see what are our options? When are they, where are they located? When, and kind of come back together and talk about them.
Yeah, no agenda left, okay.
When I, I think we also have the option to try to strike a balance of where are we seeking professional development, knowledge? As well as team building. And so there may be, I'd like to explore, what does it look like where, you know, there's certain ones that we do as a team. And everybody's there for the team building and, and the knowledge. But then there's certain things where one or two of us may attend. One, and report back to the board, right? To get a broader breadth of the knowledge that we're getting intaking. As we feed into things like the strategic plan, the master facilities plan, that sort of.
Almost feels like that plays into our committee work as well.
Right.
Yeah.
You know, like the branding, the rebranding, that, well, maybe it would have made sense for somebody besides Betsy and Lauren. To be at that national conference that they went to, to get a different feedback than what they're, but that's where we could even apply the committee work intentionally. On this is how we can support the district.
Or just a broader selection, two of us go here, two of us go, yeah.
I also think, you know, in education, we tend to go in very hindrance sometimes, right? There are conferences, particularly around master facilities, right? That you can go to to really help you think outside the box, or business or, you know, the architecture firms or, uh, lead building, you know, things like that. That can really help you kind of get a new perspective that maybe is not only in education, but can really put you forward thinking. So as we think of some of the buckets that we have, we might have some opportunities, like you said, maybe not as a whole group. But just send them some group members to really make sure that we have kind of top-tier new, new thinking in that particular area.
And, and this is, this is tangentially related, but I think as, again, as we look at our professional development, uh. Especially on master facilities, I'm a fan of getting out and seeing what is going on across the, the country. There are so many innovative models and different approaches than the trip, like, oh, we have this many schools and this is the format that we call. And to really see, and that, that was one thing that did come out of COSPA was, uh, Clear Creek. Has an amazing example where they actually have a space where the community comes in and teaches the classes from a pre-education, uh, pre-K standpoint. And it's very different than what it looks like here. Getting out and seeing those examples, I think there's value to open our thinking of what's possible. So maybe leveraging that, that would, that would live outside of conferences.
And then that, even in that facility, like it, it has surprised me that as a team, we haven't took field trips.
Yeah.
You know, as we're talking about the importance of the facilities, have we went out and explored and looked at some of these other facilities? And what things we might want to bring back or to get a little bit of perspective on other, other districts, not just our district. Because not, as far as I know, we haven't done one of those.
No, well, we have, there has been some board members that did. And I think that's.
But I didn't even know about that, so.
Yes, but, but that's a great idea because.
And, and I'm accustomed to that, right? Every time you make a building, you kind of go and you see it firsthand. And it's like when you build a house, right? But also the boots on the ground will go, we built that and we thought it would be used X way. Well, actually it's used this way.
Yeah.
Right? Or we built this fabulous space, but get like, I remember once we visited, um, very high-tech school. And they were like, we don't have an elevator. Like, you know what I mean? Like, we needed out the front ceiling. Like, we, we didn't, we didn't think about the capacity and the devices and the equipment. Like, we have a, we have a very nice facility, but it's not really functional from a student perspective.
Yeah.
Um, so I think just getting that kind of firsthand experience, because we've all done something, right? By the bathroom, right? You go. Oh, I should have, would have done that, right? Um, but I think hearing that, that firsthand. Um, so not exactly conference, but I do want to get a little, little, little bit of clarity on the, um, about chamber events. Okay, so, um, I think historically we have all tried to attend chamber event. I think just because of schedules, that's been complex. So my question is, would we, would we like to continue in that model of all of us going? Or would it be something where Adam goes, I go, Betsy goes, and then there's two board members or maybe three board members? I, I just feel like maybe they're, based on the feedback that I received internally, that sometimes it's a scramble to get people to attend. So maybe having some more consistent rotation might help us to be able to use those luncheon seats while available. If you say, I don't think it's an issue, maybe it was just a busy here, just some perspective on that.
I, I think that we did need to do the two-person model. The, the problem, not problem, but the issue, if I remember correctly, came in like that there were certain topics that we all wanted to attend. Like states, and if it wasn't your turn, then you didn't get to go. Um, so then we, then everybody knew. But I know the problem with Melissa, not problem with Melissa, the problem Melissa has now is. People don't always answer her events and she, we paid.
Right.
For those people to go and then they don't go. So I don't know if there's a better system.
Can I ask a, a more direct question on that? Do you guys as a team believe that it should be an expectation for us to be there? Because I'm just gonna say in my first two years, sometimes I might not have prioritized that or I may have forgotten. Where if you guys say, no, this is definitely an expectation, then we'll, we can make sure that we keep schedules aligned with that.
I, my, my point of view on this is, like, I have a standing commitment that I cannot make any of the luncheons, right? So that's just a, a reality that, that there. But I think I also said there, like, I want a better strategy for the, for the chamber than we attend luncheons. Like, what is the meaningful engagement and what's the strategy of engaging the right way?
Like going through the motions.
Um, and I, I don't know, cause I, I, I haven't been able to attend any of those luncheons, but like the other events, like there's value in attending some. But I don't see a, hey, this is what we're trying, like, what are our goals with the chamber? How are we partnering? That sort of thing? It's a, we're attending their events. And that, that leaves more desire for me to say, you know, you have to be at the luncheon because it supports whatever. Like, I don't have a way to say this is important or not, so I don't know exactly what are, what we're trying to, what the goal is within that goal with the chamber.
And Doug, I kind of went down that route a whole accidentally the other day, right? So, um, the reason I say that is because, you know, we have a sponsorship with the chamber. We also have a membership with the chamber and I thought naively that the luncheons were like included in all of that. And then I learned, no, that's a separate comp, right? And I'm like, oh.
Realize that.
Yeah, so.
It, they've evolved in their pricing. It was part of the sponsorship, is my understanding.
Now it's, now it's, it's not. And so I was just trying to wrap my head around, okay, exactly to your point, you know? What is that partnership? How, how much are we investing? Whether that's time, you know, finances, people, whatever it is. And then what is our desired outcome or, or desired metric? And so that's how the conversation started. Um, and so, you know, I, I've got the luncheons online, I've got the, um, there's some social events, like golf outings and jingle mingles. I've got all women's, women's events, but I would just wanted to make sure, and maybe, maybe I need to spend a year experiencing that. And then we can come back and say, what does this look like? What does this partnership look like? As Joe and I've talked about, um, Joe and I've talked about, how do we partner and make that a valuable relationship or improve that relationship? So maybe it's something we just need to spend a year exploring because to see it boots on the ground. But I do think that making sure that we have some deliberateness if you attend might be an opportunity for growth.
And maybe we can, at the beginning of the year or whatever their schedule is, let Melissa know. Of clearly things will change, but it is our intention to attend these particular luncheons. And then again, she can follow up, but at least then if Doug knows he's always gonna have a conflict. She is not reserving a seat for him or if he knows he, oh, we have a conflict, then, then we know upfront.
Yeah.
Um, and then like, I know there's a meeting coming up where because we have the sponsors, sponsorship. And we have the seasonal lunch tickets or whatever, we have extra spaces. That we do have a bench team, whether that's principals or whomever that will stand in. So those tickets don't go unused because not only is it a waste of resources on our end, it's about look at the chamber.
Right.
When there's Lakota tickets that aren't picked up and they don't want that because they reserve the space for us. And then they're like, why is this empty table here? So I think if we can be more deliberate in our bench team. And again, I, I appreciate there's pros and cons of what is our objective. But I do think it's an opportunity to have many people in our business community and one spot. Particularly the fact that we no longer have somebody who's currently managing those internship relationships and business relationships. I do think it's important that Lakota has a face and is there and is intentional with our business community. Clearly that's one segment of our business community and how do we run that? But I don't want to lose at least that connection we do have. And again, if somebody's gonna ask Adam a question there, that they won't bother to email. But if they've heard, you know, that Lakota's gouging people for X, Y, or Z, if they, if they ask him and he's like, no, this is the reality. I think that that is a helpful opportunity at those meetings.
You made a good point with the hiring, that's the table of students.
Right, right.
Um, and I thought, first track, right? Ideally, I mean, they have the topic each month.
Right.
For what's going to be, you know, presented or the speaker. So in my mind, you get the topic coordinated with the principal. Who coordinates with kids who are in that internship or in that experience. And so you have that aligned, going back to that, Isaac, of like, hey, the right people are hearing the message and we're expanding. Maybe you have some kids who are like, hell, might be that, maybe not, and you invite them. So I think we have some alignment opportunity with the back or the business advisory committee. Um, and then I think again, as I continue to experience, um, chamber events, as if really figure out how we can really harness and leverage that partnership. But for this year, I want to make sure I'm just hearing right from Melissa perfectly. So Doug and Isaac, because of work conflict. Will not attend monthly lunches.
Yes, lunches, yeah.
And then that, that always gives us a start for how we need to purchase for this year.
And I, I do personally think, again, from a standpoint of visibility, that it's important that you can have.
And we had talked about if there's a conflict of any kind, then in my stead, you know, like, like, like a true, I just cannot get there. Like you said, a bench, right? Who is ready to go when he's sick.
Right, yes, there are gonna be.
There's gonna be instances where that comes up. Okay. Um, fees for fee.
Fees for fees. So this is one of the things that we talked about, uh, finance committee and bringing that back around. Uh, we did find out that we do have the ability as a district to absorb. The, there was a credit card tiering structure that is the company. We don't have any choices with that. There's also ACHV that's standardized. And then, um. We had the ability to roll everything forward or those were one in order to have a free option. We've decided to absorb the ACH portion of that at this time. That'll be distributed to the funds based on where the collection was. We'll do that at the end of the year. But that, uh, we felt like that was an important thing to include so that parents can still bring in cash or checks. We really want to discourage that. I mean, actually, yeah, not that, not that we, you know, don't want people using cash or checks. But there's a lot of security, safety, impl- imp- implications around that of. I've had calls on the kid lost the money or the money didn't end up or what. And so it's just, it's a more clean process. This new platform we're on also has the ability for a much cleaner refund process. Should that be needed if people are utilizing the tool in that way? So at this time, uh, unless anybody had any objections, we had flipped that ACH portion is. We are paying that as a district. Uh, thoughts, comments, concerns?
Can I ask some clarifying questions? So in the former system, what were we covering and what were we not covering?
In the former system, Lakota was absorbing the entire thing.
Okay, that was my understanding.
Yeah, we were absorbing all of that.
And then in.
If I can interrupt, prior to COVID, we were passing on a two-dollar fee.
Yeah.
And then during COVID, we absorbed all the fees. And then now we're where we are. So there has been.
Now we're more.
Pass-on model and then a absorption.
But were we using S R to cover the transaction fees? So when I paid my, my athletic fees for my child, were we covering the credit card fees or the?
What had been taking place prior was the general fund was eating that in general, the whole thing.
Okay.
Um, what we did put in place this, this year was a redistribution based on where the fee went to. So then the child nutrition took their fair share, uh, athletics took their fair share. And we didn't have a whole lot of general fund because we weren't charging those fees due to the S R picking those up. Now with the S R coming back on, the fund where the fee went to will take its appropriate.
Okay, but before we were covering both.
That's correct. It was always a A fee. It was, it was always a fee.
It was a fee, whether it is ACH, you, we're also charging fees for ACH, apart from credit card.
The, this is, the companies that we have or that, that we had the ability to contract with to collect these fees. These are their fees. They're not like, we're making money for the solid cost.
Yeah, but the question I have is, you see, the platform are different. If it is a credit card, yes, it comes with a fee. But if it is, ACH is when you key in the routing number.
Right.
Right.
They still charge those a fee, it's just a lower fee. It's regardless, every financial transaction gets a fee. It's just lower for ACH.
That should have been negotiated during your, whatever, we've negotiated with them. Because I know most companies, they only charge the credit card because the credit card charge you a fee. When the money is drafted.
You were asking the exact same questions that we had asked. And when, when we don't have more options that connect in with our softwares, that's where we're kind of bound to. A very limited.
Right.
Vendor.
And I'm not trying to open up, that's my feelings. I know that, but.
Yeah, yeah. And believe me, I always, I always want something to be.
So definitely. So my second question then is, what is the size and scope of these fees that we're anticipating? So from both, both ways. So from both, both ways.
So in the past, they had been over two hundred thousand all in.
Both.
All in, because when, when in the days when we had the S R funds and we absorbed all fee. It was, it was over two hundred thousand. This year, uh, we did a redistribution of that based on the accounts where, that it went to. Which brought that drastically down for the general fund. We, the, the fee was zero prior to pandemic, prior to COVID and all that, because it was all rolled forward. So now we are, we are hoping that the ACH only, that it will turn into a more manageable. Expense as well as us distributing that to the funds in which the money went to. Uh, keeps that kind of in line with what we forecasted so that it doesn't become, you know, when it was plus two hundred thousand, it become an issue. You know, become a, what's the return on the investment? Is this something we wanna continue with? Is this not, can we redistribute some of these funds to better manage the kids? Cause these are kind of usage fees that only the people that are using is going to, going to have.
Ken, have we communicated this?
We have had a communication, but we are going to, we wanted to get through this. We're going to have another communication go out as the fees drop.
Because that's the emails and Facebook posts and phone calls. Is that, why did they make that? And for the love of God, can we please tell people that Parents' Square doesn't exist anymore?
Um, Easy Pay.
That's, I'm sorry, Easy Pay. Because that's, I mean, that's something, in my opinion, we should have communicated when we switch. We're going to Parents' Square, whatever we're using, because Easy Pay no longer exists. People, perception is in the community is that we've just ditched Easy Pay. And without any research or anything, and you know, now we're charging a fee. Instead of the fact that there is no more Easy Pay.
And there's always been a fee, it's just.
And there's always been a fee that we've.
There's always been a fee.
I mean, because if you, anything you order online, any ticket you order, anything you order online has a fee associated with it. If you use, even if you sometimes your ACH. Like I drive myself to the ballpark to buy tickets at the local, because I actually.
Yeah, I know, I, I'm the same, I'm the exact same way. We went to the Weller County Fair. And they had the little, um, QR code where you can purchase a ticket and Monica says it's three dollars. I'm like, I'll just walk over here and buy it for ten, you know, like, we're not doing that. So I completely appreciate that.
We have to, I, I don't feel, we needed to communicate better from the get-go, which is something we can fix now.
I think, I think this is a little bit more complicated. And the fact that when I go decide that I wanna go see U two in concert, right? Choosing to go see U two in concert, right? There's so much of this that, you know, you can get into a hierarchy of needs and communication with, with the end consumer. Which in this case is the, is the families is, hey, you wanna play sports? Well, now you gotta pay these fees to play these sports, okay? So now I go in, I go, oh, and now there's this credit card fee on top of it, right? Or whatever. And there is so much intricacies, just this conversation that we had that goes into this. And I think it's worth us taking a step back to, where do we wanna focus of our communication and narratives to be? Is it on transaction fees of credit cards? Or is it student achievement and stuff? This is the stuff that as a parent, I feel more personal because, oh, I'm getting hit with these fees. It's harder for me to engage with some of the broader topics because that's much more up here and the various ways we communicate. So while we are trying to be good financial stewards, I think it's also, it, it behooves us to understand where does this become a distraction? Versus the, the work that we're trying to focus in as a priority versus the engagement that we're trying to get out of our communities. And I'm always highly critical of this with the P T S Os. So I believe this is a P T S O is, you know, as a P T S O, you're trying to manage every cent as, as, as financially stewardship also. And the journeys that we've gone through as a P T S O is, as we tried to offset those fees, it caused such disengagement. It caused people bringing in payments and it created so much extra work and, and, and effort. And then communication problems that once we got people, once we absorbed it, it made things so much more easier. And we took it that into the accounting, the planning, right? So we said, okay, now instead of charging ten dollars for tickets at this event, we're gonna charge eleven dollars for, for t-shirts or whatever it was that we're doing. I think there's an opportunity for us to think through student fees of, okay, what does that look like? When we add in the, like, we plan for the processing as part of everything else that's covered in those student fees. And is there an advantage to that?
I, I will say, we had a lot of these discussions in finance and went around and round. And that's what we wanted to make sure that there was a free option for people. Because originally it was going to be a fee for everyone. And we landed at the last finance meeting at this juncture where it was ACH would be free. But we didn't, you know, we did wanna discourage people from every week, you know, the five dollars. Even though we wanted to recognize that could be what some people chose to do. As, and that's, I was in alignment, I was just like, we need a free option and I'm okay with the charge on the credit card. I will say now, seeing feedback, it has caused me to pause. Because I didn't realize how many people would be concerned about allowing their bank information to be used on the ACH. And they were afraid of with so much hacking happening. I don't really wanna open my bank account, even though, you know, it goes through secure portals. We all know how they get compromised. That people were fearful of using that ACH option. And how many people have now said, this is, you know what? I'm just sending in twenty dollars with Johnny. They can apply it to his account or I'm gonna send in a check. So seeing the reaction makes me fear that our soft costs are going to be higher than what we anticipated. And while I originally agreed and said, and I own that, um, that I thought that it was fine to charge the credit card fees as long as we had a free option. I am questioning now if the, not only the soft costs of the PR, but the soft costs of how many people are extolling that they're going to send in money with their kid or a check and the additional work that creates for our staff. That perhaps we are being penny wise and pound foolish after all. I did not anticipate that response.
Do we know what the cost would be if we picked up all these?
It was north of two hundred thousand.
That was for all fees. I thought that was just the ACH.
That was all fees, all fees, all costs, all fees, all costs, yeah.
The, the funny part, the transaction.
Thank you.
The fun part of this is, like you said, um, this, anything to do with public education. You know, education generally, people have, I don't know, they just wanna create an excuse to fight for. Because two hundred and fifty thousand is a lot of money, but compared to the comments and complaints that is coming, we have to consider as a war. But trust me, these certain people that say they cannot pay through our portal, they want to protect their account information. Shop online every day and they're paying those same fees as well. You know, but when it comes to, okay, school, you know, Lakota, you always find somebody looking for something to just give you a bad name, you know, so maybe I think we need to consider that as a war to see what.
And it's, it's, that is the very fine balancing act of the, we're coming into deficit spending. Where are we, where do we wanna make the investment? And that's, I've had a call from a friend that's, uh, son's getting ready to play sports. You know, about the athletic fee increase and the comment that I made back was, well, would we rather apply that to a property value forever? Or just use it while you have it? Oh, okay, never thought about it that way. Don't be putting any levies. Yeah, that's right. So that's, that's part of that balancing act of every decision we make has a cost. And how can we, we need, and that's where we're depending on you guys to calibrate with the community. You're the voice of the community that we're depending on to help us know, because then we'll redevelop budgets accordingly based on how we're going to plan to do these things.
But I think we can also start to plan for that when we arrive on what those student fees are, right? So I, I would have no problem with building in a set spread, in a better approach, cost for processing across that. So that litany of stuff that in the school supplies, right, everything else that we've got, right? We incorporate the Chromebook service, uh, service warranty in there as well. And incorporate the, the minute fee to cover that so that this, we can in the future cover that, right? With the fees that were required.
Yep.
Right? We've already opened the box to, we're requiring you to pay student fees.
And part of the hope that we had with, with, especially on the academic side is, you know, with those kits, that we're able to leverage our economy of scale purchase to drive down the cost of the items within. And only, like, we're not marking that up for what we've done. All we're doing is trying to recoup that and we're hoping that saves some families, some time and energy and a few bucks, just like with the extended warranty. You know, if you get an insurance, that's thirty dollars per device that just disappears. Where with this, we've got it embedded in and we can keep managing that with some internal fixes that we also have.
Right. But, but I don't want an objection over a dollar twenty-five charge to be the reason why. Well, we shouldn't have school supply because you're saying we eat twenty dollars on school supplies, but I'm, you know, it's, it's that, that, where can we make sure we're solving for the intent? Which is we want this to be seamless, frictionless and seen as a value to what you're providing.
Yeah, that's where to me, you know, once this all played out, the shock that I had was that, um, the cost was actually the highest in the kindergarten. Because historically, I would believe that a kindergarten student reflects a younger family that has less money for other things like that. And so I was, I would have hoped that it would have been a little bit flip flop, but when we're trying to do a zero-based budgeting, it, we're trying to keep it, it is what it is. Because I know one of the things that Jenna had expressed when she got here was that fund had over a million dollar balance. Well, why in the world would we be charging fees and growing them? This is to be a zero-based budget, just what it costs us is just rolled out. So that's also important to manage, because if that starts getting skewed, that's a big problem. That is a problem. Yeah.
All right. I haven't heard where everyone is on this. I don't, do you need more feedback on where you wanna land?
Are you pointing to me?
I, I'm not sure, honestly, I'm not sure with, I, the three of you, what feedback for sure, where you want.
I don't, can, like, that's for me. I, I agree, align more with Doug and build it in next year. I feel like, I don't know. Is it worth it this year to waive all fees now that people pay their two cool fees and then refunding? And it's, where's that two hundred thousand dollars gonna come from? I, I guess it's, I.
I think my under, understanding is worth, worth going forward, right? Maybe, maybe next school, in a year or not, retrogressive, retrogressive, going back or forward. I'm not gonna, I'm, I don't think it's, it's a good idea to go back over. But if we're committed to going forward, either implement a little increase to compete now. Or see what the complaint, what is the, if the, if the, is what getting rid of.
I, I think we have to, for me, I think we have to be careful saying, well, it's only two hundred thousand dollars. Or it's, oh, I mean, because if we start saying that for every state, we're gonna be deficit spending.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of only two hundred thousand dollars items that we have in this large district that's turning to millions quickly.
And I guess I, 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 like, you know, Julie said, will it be worth the soft cost at the other end? I, I don't know. I mean, I, I don't know what that, that's really.
Point to be a hindrance?
Well, and here, here's what I want everybody here is, none of these decisions to me are personal. And I am not too proud of anything to say. If we wanna switch it and we wanna get a calibration of, because we did put a new process in last year that also included the distribution of the fee for the fees.
Right.
To the appropriate places that we had not done before. So if we wanted to do that, we can go back in, we can turn that off, we can redistribute that back to anybody that had made a payment. And then we can keep going from there and keep calibrating, but the question becomes then, the same topic comes up if we decide to turn it all next year.
Right.
Or the same topic turns, you know, so I would say future thinking. Most of you guys have lived through the last time there wasn't asked. I have not, you know, I was not here at that point. Was any of these type topics brought up at that point as, well, if you guys would have done X, Y, or Z? Maybe this would have changed on the ask side of things.
I, I think that's when we created the fee is just another way to spend less. But again, I don't know, we've always thought through the full implications of those decisions. Well, and, and I think you don't wanna turn people off and then they turn them off to anything. Because why would I support you financially when you nickel and dime me for everything? And I think there is a bit of that mentality of, to Doug's point, I may be paying the fee by paying forty-two dollars in fees versus forty, but it somehow feels better if I have a forty-two dollar.
We talked about that within the treasurer's office. Every time I purchase anything online or anything anywhere, I just don't wanna see it.
Right.
Yeah, I just don't see it. Like, me personally, I just don't wanna see it. Like, I absolutely hate that. Like, if I went to go buy a car, if somebody told me I didn't have to pay the tax, that makes me feel better about that. Yeah, it's just one of those things for me, being the financial.
And a lot of, a lot of what drove that in business, right, was the airline industry after the first tech quest, right? It was because there's all these search engines giving you the lowest price. So if you had your fees in, you didn't have the lowest price. So we could separate that out and sort of down to the very minimum. Nobody is doing a search on our school fees or our athletic fees. There's no advantage to taking that out. But understanding my all-in cost, okay, done, and I can move on versus surprises. And I think that's where, especially with the vendor, that we don't control the communication or how that is kind of articulated. That also opens us up to being the scapegoats for, you know, poor execution.
But if this is working the right way with the board, I appreciate if you guys are getting feedback like that. That we're able to have this conversation and able to say, okay, let's adjust, let's tweak, let's do whatever we need to do, if that's something we need to do.
I think part of the, like, the, the last time we went through a levy, that was part of the levy promise was we brought down the athletic fees. Like I paid five hundred fifty dollars for my child's sit on a bench. And I think that's, we, we consciously made that decision to bring it down because it was so high.
Right, but then, and like, again, the conversation finance was, while we did make that, that we're not, we're not going back to five fifty. But when you haven't changed something in twelve years, at some point, you have to say, okay, this is not sustainable.
Doug's point yesterday, how long was that? We are anchored, like, almost to the point that I've taken away from this, like, maybe we should have a co, community conversation of, let's talk about two thousand thirteen. Let's all like, talk about it, let's all get it out and then say, can we move on?
Yeah.
Because this has been an anchor point since I've worked together, uh, but everybody goes back.
The cost of everything has gone up. Again, two hundred thousand dollars here, two hundred thousand dollars there, it's going.
And on the athletics side, like, you know, I think everybody maybe hopes that their kid does participate then, but not everybody does. So to a parent that didn't have a kid participating in that.
Right.
I could see the angle of, well, I'm glad that I'm not paying for all of that.
Right, yeah, I'm just, yeah, that wasn't my.
So, I, again, I think for you going forward, what I'm hearing, and maybe I'm wrong. Kelly would prefer that we continue to charge the fee at least this year. I think that's what Isaac is saying. I think I'm hearing Doug and I say, we would prefer to recalibrate and absorb the fee. Am I correct? So unfortunately, I do feel like we need the feedback of Christina to help give, am I misinterpreting that?
A little bit.
Okay.
I, 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 for me, I just, where's the money coming from?
General fund.
Well, what does that do, what does that do? I, I mean, I know where the money's coming from, but I just, I wanna be cognizant that every time a, oh, it's only two hundred thousand dollars comes up. We don't be like, oh, okay, never, because that's gonna add up. We, we at some point have to balance that, that's all I really say.
We had a, we added my first district to thirty thousand dollar copier savings. That by the time those sixth or seventh meeting later, I made the comment of, we ain't gonna talk about copier savings no more because this has now cost us a hundred eighty thousand dollars because we've used thirty thousand six times. So, you know, there's, I appreciate we're looking at it that way.
The fact that, to Julie's point, okay, let's waive it this year, but then it comes back next year or it comes in.
This would be an add into the forecast.
And then when we arrive on fees, and I think especially as it gets spread out, right? Then athletics needs to think through, okay, you're gonna have about this much charges from a processing sample, right? So plan your fees accordingly, because it's gonna eventually hit that funding, right?
Yeah, so next year the fee is three oh five instead of three hundred. Because it's built in, it's, is my thought when you're asking, that would be, that would be my thought. The school supply fee becomes forty-one dollars next year. So the impact is, we would have an additional two hundred thousand dollars of spending this year, which would impact the amount of surplus we had. But then next year, it would go back into what the fees were again, is my inter. Like a way that we could manage it.
Yeah, towards next year, correct?
I, I, my interpretation of what you guys were saying is just wait, leave, leave it as, like, charge the fees this year and then next year build them in. So that we, we don't absorb the two hundred. The difference being, I think, we're. So that we we don't absorb the two hundred. The difference being, I think, we're all saying we wouldn't consent with putting in the fees next year again, maybe I'm wrong. But that for this year, it's just whether or not we eat it for one year or not is what I'm.
Also, communication piece, if we're going to do that and absorb those pieces and put it in school fees next year, I think we say that upfront. Yeah, I don't think that becomes a surprise next year.
Yeah, that's right.
I mean, I'm fine if we want to do that, if communication is what got us into this. No offense to you, I'm not saying it's your fault or anybody's fault, is that we didn't really communicate. The whole changing from easy pay and why very effectively, so everybody is. You know, concerned and wants easy pay back. And so to me, I'm actually fine with that. If we we made a front and we don't, the next two hundred thousand dollars isn't like, oh, it's only two hundred thousand.
Might have an opportunity to, I agree with you about being proactive in communication. I don't know if right now we can anticipate what we might include all that in communication, because the reason I say that. So we're talking school fees, I'm going to use like supply list, things like that. We had a very different conversation the other day with a large group about like club card and the athletic. And I learned a lot in that conversation and and and, you know, I asked some questions being able to, why is it like this or why is it like? We might be really able to audit all of that and package that. Either differently or maybe beautifully, like we might have an opportunity to kind of continue with what we're doing now and be very forward thinking. And do our homework over the next five or six months about fees in general and package that up differently for twenty-five, twenty-six. Because I think part of that conversation we were having about like club cards and athletics and like, you know, play and. Fees, we might be able to put that all in a blender and come up with a totally different solution than we even know right now because we're looking at it. In a single entity rather than a group.
But when you say continue what we're doing now, we changed our practice for this year, would we go back to last year's or what we started?
We would, we would not absorb the two hundred thousand dollars families would come, they would, they would feel that for a year. But but maybe best like plans, if we could come up with it, hey, we heard your feedback, right? We had a new plan, it wasn't a sequence, but look at this whole new package that we've come up with. Savings, here's how the fee, fees has worked out, we may be able to package that as a collective rather than we're trying to band-ings. Not knowing how these other things affect it. So for club cards, you need to, I will restate the question I asked about the club cards. I was looking at the data of how many club cards we sold. And we were talking about it from very peacefully responsible like finances. And I said, well, my bigger question, why don't we have more kids at clubs? Like we can talk about club card collection, that's that. Trust me, I was like, let's talk about the money collected in that, where it's go, all that, get that. Problem is we need more engagement with our kids to be able to have a good coverage conversation about.
Because the the conversation turned into this is about the money. Because it turned into being about the money. It shouldn't have been about the money. When you have, when you look at the distribution of the supplementals that we were spending. And the participation within the areas that was receiving them. We failed. I mean, this is not working well. It was very, and that's what made it about the money and it shouldn't ever be about the money.
Maybe coupling like school fees, as we know, for school supplies, with kind of the club card conversation, with a pay conversation, really having a really. Robust dialogue about that, getting some student data about like, aren't you involved in clubs or what would bring you to clubs or? Do you even know about clubs? Like, you know what I mean, like educating people in that process? That might be able to help us create a better package next year for delivery, knowing that this year we've got some cleanup and communication just to. Say, hey, we're not going to absorb it, but here's, here's the process, easy pay went away, here's why we made this transition. Here's all those give the back checks and then next year create a different format.
What is the fee you pay for the credit? I mean, and it's like, I don't have kids, you do too, so you're paying fees, so I don't know what the.
So up to twenty-four dollars and ninety-nine cents, it's a flat dollar sixty-five, which ends up being a relatively high percentage. If it's from twenty-five down to forty-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents, it's like. For whatever four point five percent comes out to, and then anything above fifty dollars is actually a four point six percent fee. Which we've even said in that question mark, that's only critical, with that, where that question mark said. I want that whole table in there. People need to see what that whole thing looks like. Because now if I'm going to pay a dollar sixty-five up to twenty-four ninety-nine. I would at least think, try to get to twenty-four ninety-nine, you know, somebody needs that except they put five dollars in. Their percentage become astronomically higher on that, on that charge. Uh, so that's what we've kind of. Been working on.
And and one of the biggest factors of that is lunch, school lunches, right? People pay as they go and that drives the smaller transaction size. So maybe there's opportunity to rethink through, you know, lunches and breakfasts as well as, you know, is that need to go through the system? Or how should we package it up? And obviously, people are balancing their budgets and what they can afford at a given point in time.
Well, that puts some pressure off of the side of the operation when we distributed that over to the fund in which it goes to. So that's now not general funded anymore, that goes over to the child nutrition fund.
Okay, here's how I feel about it. I feel like the decision for this year has been made, people are paying the fees already, some are choosing to do it by credit cards. Some are choosing to through their bank account information. This is already happening to make a change now. Feels extremely reactive. I think that where we move forward for this year is all in our communication. Moving forward, meaning. You really don't just have one free option. You have three free options. You can send cash into school, you can send a check into school. Or you can enter your credit card information. The paid option or the fee option is to enter your credit, credit card or your ACH. And so to me, it's like choosing an ATM, right? I can go to my bank's ATM and bank for free. Even though it's might be inconvenient, or I can choose a more convenient option that's closer and pay the ATM fee. But that's my choice, right? And so I think if we can communicate out and say, if you want to avoid these fees that are going to come about this year. Here are some ways that you can avoid that. You can send a check into school or cash, which I know we don't want to do, but here we are, right? Those are free options, or you can enter your your bank account information and move forward.
And legally, we're bound with that. That's that's same way with the athletic gates.
Right.
You know, we, we can't not get a cash option. I mean, that's.
And I think about, and I think about it this way, you know, this isn't just the school fee. For for probably a majority of our families, this is going to happen multiple times over the course of the year. It's going to hit them at school, paying their actual school fees. It's going to hit them with athletic fees, it's going to hit them every time they put money on their kid's lunch account. Or what have you, all the other things that go into that. And so what feels like a two dollar fee. In actuality, for most families over the course of the year, could be a fifty dollar fee, which, you know. For for some families feels like a lot of money. But if we communicate to them, you don't have to pay that. Here's the ways that you can go about avoiding that. Then I think we have given them options moving forward. Do I think we have this conversation in the future about how and if we are able to absorb? Absolutely, we should always be having that conversation of what, what fiscally can we absorb to take that burden off of our families? That should be a constant conversation every year when we're asking people for money. Um, so that's how I feel.
I could, I could be very wrong, but I think, I feel that a lot of this. Is going back to the anchor point of two thousand thirteen of, we charged fees, we charged this. Which, you know, even for this year, we worked really hard to get the high school, freshman high school fees from three pages of all card items. That I remember the point when we said, if it's not at least five dollars, don't even put it on here. Like, you know, it was so absurd, like we had some of those sixty-five cents, and it was just insanity. And so we've worked hard to reduce soft costs, which that's also playing into this. What we're trying to kind of prevent, which is some savings of, even the processing takes time and money. You know, there's, we've also, we've also got a group of people within our school buildings. That they haven't had this build into their capacity of their day. Now this is coming back in. So, you know, that, I don't believe people's been sitting idle. I believe people's been backfilling what they used to have as normal business for them. Is now they're doing other things that then, how's that getting picked up? So there, this is just one of the gears of the machine.
We, we have charged fees since two thousand thirteen though, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
But. No, Ezra picked them up since two thousand twenty-one.
Okay, yeah.
But the athletic was still not picked up by that. That was still a, this is the academic.
And and I think we need to acknowledge that that choice to use Ezra funds in that way. Is probably antagonizing some of the reaction that we're seeing today, right, is, hey, you have people who are what, in third grade now? Who've never paid.
Haven't seen them at all.
Right? And so my, my, that perception is me as somebody who's only been here for three years is, well, now I'm suddenly paying fees and I'm getting. Like, that's a very different experience for me who has a senior who's like, oh, I remember, yeah, we used to pay two dollars every time I loaded money on. You know, and stuff. So that's what makes this complicated is there's many layers and people are in different positions. And then you look at some of the engagement levels of people in the district and and challenges as far as ESL and stuff like that. This becomes very complicated for me.
Cause that was a, that was another thing, is the whole initial plan was, that was a three-year, that was the initial plan from the beginning. We worked as hard as we could to repackage to get a fourth year out of it. And we still reflected a transfer of a hundred and thirty thousand because we still came up short from what that need was, even though we did absorb it. So there was a hundred and thirty of this in fiscal twenty-four that got picked up because we just came a little short.
Just the communication.
So my question is exactly now that, especially with Christina say what she said, I'm like. But maybe they need to be more educated on all the options. If you choose to now pay, it's your convenience now, you want to sit at home and pay, right? Or using your ACH or credit card. If not, you can avoid that fee, send in a chat or send in a cash. So if the information is out there, let them have the choice, I think they might clear off the complaints that were.
I think we also have a building, working timing, so. Not thinking through it as a parent, I'll put lunch money on the counter and then go. Right, because you've got one, well, fees don't drop until around the end of September or in the first, end of August versus September. So now, depending on how you pay it, you pay two fees, right? You see what I'm saying? You might be, you might be able to couple that together and really think through the timing of when things drop. To your point, you're going to spend over twenty-four dollars, you know what I mean, to get you in a different bracket of, if you're choosing to make a payment. So we might be able to look at the time.
And I know it's unrealistic, but in a lovely, perfect world, if we had more options and abilities to to structure that, like. I would love if if everybody had the ability, if they had athletics, they had a fee, they had this, they had, yeah, they did that all at once. That's even much more cost effective, but we pay that. That's on the ACH item. You know, we would still be, that would be more cost effective for us, the district. But if they went to do the credit card, once it gets past those two tiers that are flat. Then it goes to like four point six percent, which to me, there's no way I would ever want to pay that.
So planning for that, right, then that gives us option to do the Disney plus option, right? Okay, hey, if you pay your your stuff for a year, here's the fee, if you need quarterly, it's this, right? So my choice to do five ninety-nine a month is based that, that's my cash flow versus I do it for the year and I save about twenty percent, right? How can we structure that to help? Give value back.
And again, thinking twelve steps ahead, I know how you like to take on some of these things, like finding vendors. Who are able to work and match our system that we're able to utilize. I don't know if that's something that can be a request to whomever is handling the new portal to say four point six as a fee. Is very high as a processing fee relative to what could be found on the market, can you partner with different banks to give us more flexibility?
Is it the interfacing of the systems, is that what, why we're limited and what we can use?
The navigation of the systems along with the POS system that's used in the cafeteria, that's the big, that right there was the biggest hurdle.
Yeah.
Is because those systems have to connect to there because sometimes, sometimes those fees can be put in within fifteen minutes if they needed it. You know, like sometimes the timing on that is much different unless like.
Yeah, but there's something also you need to know in the banking. Um, the the bank, if you're using credit cards in the balance, that fee is already there. The bank, either the bank is absorbing it or you're being charged. So it depends on which bank you're going to, Benvisa, Mastercard, anybody, they have those fees there. American Express is even higher, that's why, you know, some merchants don't take American Express, because the fee is higher. And that's why it's been, it's been transferred. I don't know if we'll be able to avoid that fee for debit card and credit card. But most ACHs are free. So maybe if you might consider, instead of, uh, I mean, ACHs are always free. I don't know why they are charging, or maybe we need to go back and negotiate. Use your ACH instead of using your debit card.
Yeah, that's where I I view that the ACH is not the bank charge. I view that that's the platform charge. Yeah, because yes, ACH is free, because that's live money. And that's where that showed me what the platform is charging for the usage of their platform.
But you see the difference? Even though you use the debit card, which is also direct money, the platform is different. So it's being charged as credit card. If you go like, say you want to pay a water bill with a, um, what's, what's just, uh. Even if you use debit card, which is also money.
It's still ACH.
It's charged because it's going through a different platform, either Visa, Mastercard or American Express, that's why the platform fee is always there. So if we're able to negotiate and get ACHs for free, maybe it's not a game, go back to our bank.
Let's get a, uh, let's get a communication.
Yeah, that's my notes, work on the communication, make sure that's brought clearly, and then we've got some. Future opportunities to kind of audit everything and kind of package, package better for twenty-two.
Cause that's where too, if 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 the expectation of that community is like, we're beyond that, we're beyond that. Why are we even charging? Like, I know in a perfect world, you know, I wish we didn't have to, but then. That has to be built in somewhere, that has to be built into supply budgets or. Athletic budgets or, you know, whatever it may be.
Is it unreasonable to come back with what that vision looks like in January, that we've got time to impact before we get into the end of school, which is the rollout? Because again, this is overlapping.
Strategic planning stuff.
Yeah, yeah, but I think also overlaps with everything else that we're going to be communicating to the community. So I want to make sure we're all in alignment before. We get behind the eight ball. Next fall is going to be a very interesting time for us.
Yeah, all right, school and staff spotlight.
Well, we actually did that yesterday, said Dale piggybacked on that yesterday, so we got that one off the list. So we have come to pretty much, we've come full circle, hopefully, right?
Can I reference that one topic from yesterday real quick before you wrap up? Can we revisit the conversation about committees?
Yes.
I don't know how, I don't know how that vote happens or what happens. I would love to serve on a committee of some sort. Um, next year, I know we kind of talked about it and then moved on to the next item, so I don't know what that looked like, but what?
Do you want to be on the fees committee?
That's a subcommittee finance.
Yes, I agree. We need to get Christina, and that was, yeah, something I I intended to text you. Or do an agenda revision and did, because yes, I think we do need to revisit committees, um, so that Christina can participate.
That's always been at the organizational meeting before, that's just the timing.
So I don't know, um, I know, yeah. Business advisory has not been overly active, but I think there's work to be do, the work to do there. I am happy to relinquish my spot on that committee, um, and have you. You know, try to get that up and running. I don't know what you have an interest, if there's any particular committees. I know attendance has been a challenge for some people at some.
Can I throw in, um, because I know it's been difficult for Isaac for you to meet for some of the finance committee meetings? Could we allow Christina to be a, uh, a sub? So that if I'm not able to make it, then then I can like Christina now and then. How much time notice do you think we can have to be fair to Christina?
Let me tell you what happened. Hold on, I want to, I want to be fair to all the, all the members. So I think. When we have committees, it's designed to do work and be accountable for that work. My, I would hate to put someone in a position to say, hey, I can't make it this way, Christina, get up to speak quick.
No, no, no.
Go into policy and then come back with ramifications and then, then I'm going to own the results from that. So I don't feel comfortable with substitutions. I think if we're going to serve on a committee, my intention is to do the work and be on the committee. Not, uh, and and we have flexibility to schedule around things, right? But if I'm not showing up or I'm not doing the work and stuff, then that just brings, then that work doesn't progress. And I don't think the solution is subbing Kelly in for for that work. So I want to be careful of that. Can I finish? So and I, I think I'm critical of us because, so you've been on for three months now, four months now and. And and I think we are way overdue in making sure that you're doing the work that you want to engage in on. So I want to support you as like a full member, not as a substitute member of any committee.
Okay, I take full responsibility for, I I missed two finals, a committee meeting. What happened was I think we had some schedule changes. In January, we had some dates. Then suddenly I don't know what happened.
Yeah, we put those on board meeting.
Exactly. So so that that messed up my calendar. Um, I'm, I'm going to make sure I get that back on my calendar. I make sure I am there, but I'm serving on the finance committee and I want to make sure I'm fully responsible for. Going for attend. I know one of it, I was out of the country and one of it, I, I, I didn't even have it in my calendar completely. I didn't have it in my calendar.
Let me make a point of application.
So if that is the reason. Uh, or the, the, the issue is pointed towards my missing two finance meetings. Yes, I take responsibility for that. But that was the reason. I have already planned my, my year, but there was a sudden change.
So but but correct me if I'm mistaken, according to our policy, right? Once we organize and elect who the president and the vice president is, then the president and the vice president appoints the committees.
At our board meeting, but that happens like the.
So given this is out, an outstanding, you know, within policy, does it make sense to have a. Uh, a revisit of committees from scratch at our next meeting?
But we haven't had a.
We haven't had, we haven't had.
Well, I think we talked about yesterday, you know, the developing of some things, maybe the working of something, it's a process to it might be good. Like, you know, regular board meeting to the public, you know, it's your super attending committees, board members. Here's the, here's the structure for those and people to be attending. That might help because, you know, we talked about, we talked about the cultural engagement. We talked about the curriculum council. Talked about that and how that's going to restructure. Um, you know, legislative was just like we talked about absorbing master facilities in one of the month meetings. We, we might need to have a talk through that to clean that up.
And even with that, with the policy, like look at this example. Sprints has absorbed the committee workload of somebody that didn't have any committees. So now let's go to a different angle. Let's say somebody resigned from the board and somebody else comes in. And they take one that's a heavy load of these committees. You know, maybe even within policy, you could say, okay, at the time when a new member became a board member. Maybe that's then something that as a whole, it makes sense to relook at. Just in policy, not because this is an example that we don't see a lot.
Yeah.
But then if you did have a new member, because then whoever that new appointed person is may go, I absolutely can't do this with the schedule. I don't. It just happens that she inherited a really light workload on that.
I don't have that policy printed to know if I do have that. I don't have it off the top of my head. I know how it works in the board meeting, but I'm not sure how it works as far as reappointment. So I.
Yeah, look at that and see. We're not gonna.
But I still think we can have more conversa, like I still think we should have more conversation today. So if policy allows, we could look at how we re. Yeah.
I'm happy if she would like to, I'm happy to give up policy or if you would like that or.
Like, what I guess, what is your interest? Where would you like to serve?
Well, I'm going to go back to something Ashley said because I'm not even entirely sure. Is it just the three that I see on the calendar all the time? Policy, community engagement and finance?
And and then business.
Yes.
Business actually has been inactive because we're trying to reorganize it and align it with, um.
Yeah.
Hamilton business, so.
Yeah, first of all, my notes yesterday, I would show the policy, community engagement, because safety is going to become, it's part of the board meeting. And I would show business advisory, which is going to kind of undergo a re, a revitalization. Um, and then finance.
Finance.
And then negotiations will be time sensitive.
Right.
Well, I want to legis, legislate.
We, it's not a committee. It's just the board, the superintendent, treasurer, make the report.
It hasn't been on here. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay.
I'm, I'm happy to work on the rebrand of business advisory, like you suggested, Julie. I would be happy to do that. I'd be happy to do policy. I would love to sit on the negotiation committee once that forms. I think I have a lot of thoughts around that.
Yeah, that's what we did when it comes home.
Yeah, so, yeah, I mean, both of those are fine.
I think your background for people with business advisory, um, just kind of having seen different organizations that might be. Because normally when you send a business advisory, I feel like you have an initiator and you have, you know, the person that you have to have that. Experience that can be really helpful.
Is this something we vote on or?
I think we need to check the policy.
I will look at the policy and then I will, I, we're going to have agenda. I think this should be something that we add to the agenda for the meeting to double check how this works. And I will say, well, I appreciate. Again, depending on how committees land, yes, the person owns the work, but historically we have had, if somebody cannot make it. And it's only going to be one member because you can't make it for a particular meeting. It's still better to at least have a second set of ears there than not. So if people can't make a meeting, please do make sure that you.
Well, we did it. But in finance, we did this at Quorum once. I mean, that was.
Right, yeah, with finance, we had, yeah, we even approved the minutes because we didn't have a Quorum.
Communication with DPC. I just don't, I don't want someone's role not to be on a committee, but to be the sub.
Yeah, but but I, but I'm saying, should you not be able to make it, please do get us out.
Cancel. A little bit of notice too.
Right, yeah. Yeah, I've covered for Kelly on community engagement when she's not been able to, you know, she had a work conflict. She's, you know, we've all done that for each other before. She's covered for me, you know, we've all, we've all been able to do that. So I think it's important to have. Yeah, and and the Quorum issue with the finance issue.
We're starting to gain a little traction on actual consistencies. My first year, it felt like we was canceling something every time I turned around or we were rescheduling stuff. So I think we're doing a nice job of, you know, what do we need? How do we need it? Let's, you know, get a committed schedule that we can stick.
It's all, it's been there since, yeah, we put it on at the board meeting. You have it on every board agenda now, which is helpful.
So we'll look at that policy to make sure we're in line with that. Um, and like I said, a public meeting, making sure, you know, really clear that there's existing committees, here's what's now kind of, you know. Penning community support, I think that'd be good to clarify that just for our own market knowledge so that we can go further.
And that we don't sit on a superintendent.
Correct.
And that's something to tell.
Clarifying that for just, you know, common knowledge, what, it must be, what.
Right, right, right.
Like, what's that mean? What does that, you know, what, how, how each behaves is kind of.
I actually sent everybody an email yesterday. You may saw, yeah, while we were talking, yeah, that I knew OSBA had something out there because. This chicken and the egg debate on superintendent versus board committees have been around for a long time. That wasn't a new topic.
Well, and it's evolved. I feel like it's changed from what people used to, was acceptable practice to what's now acceptable.
And even, even where we do a nice job here of keeping ourselves out of trouble because, you know, we've had some experience with that. Is irregardless, we're going to run minutes, we're going to have agendas and we're going to keep those because that's at the end of the day, what becomes critical.
Anything else before we start, so you know about? So I'm just going to speak something about, I think, I think we've had a really, we had some really good dialogue and sort of, you know, relationship building together for last two days. Um, coming full circle, we started about what was the purpose of this retreat, what we wanted out of this retreat. Um, and I heard things about, you know, the brand, knowing our goals, um, knowing how we like to behave with each other and those needs. I also heard we want trust and transparency, um, and and honest dialogue with each other. And so I think the question that, um, that I would leave us in, just like the day like Kim and with yesterday about the system versus the system of schools. Is what would you like to see be our one goal as a board? Because, you know, superintendents have goals, uh, treasurers have goals, but what is our board goal? For this year that we can all say, we can commit to together. Not three or five goals, just, just one, just one that we can hold each other accountable to in our.
Let's start somewhere and it could be easy so that we can get the snowball kind of going downhill, you know, just something that we can. Begin saying, look, we can achieve things together. We can do this.
And it might be around culture. It might be around, um, reading structures. It might be could be around. Branding, maybe around anything like that. But what, what do we think that we can all work towards, um, between?
Goodness, who would have thought that it could be a, a new logo? I mean, we crossed that bridge in the last two years and I'm going, I can't believe that's.
For me, I think, uh, like I earlier said, is rebranding because we had it run before. Which to me was like distorted. The community look at it different. Everybody knows, did not see us working together. So we're rebranding, we're repackaging. And, and reselling what, who we are to the community. We are here for business. We're here for students' achievement. Our goal is aligned. All bring all our differences, the strengths that we have together so that we. We hit our goal, which is the student's achievement. So rebranding is what I think. Which will show us and we show up in everything.
Others? Are you calling on me?
Anyone. I said others, sorry.
I thought you, I, I did not hear.
Christina, Christina likes to be, I'm, I'm gonna make her move forward in the rotation.
Um, for me, I, I believe that our goal for this year should be. A very outward focus on the fact that this board is making decisions that are best for all students, not singularly any. Um, with a goal of eventually. All students are increasing our evidence. Our student achievement.
I, for me, I think. Our goal, like, I would say collaboration with intent. To make sure that it's not just a. We had this wonderful two days, we all. Talk and and extra respect to each other's opinions. I think we always have to do that, but I, I always think that our collaboration has to, I, I'm having trouble explaining what I mean. But with intent, just that it's not, they're not going to collaborate for the sake of collaborating because it looks good to the public. We're going to collaborate with the intent of, back to Christina's point and all of our points we've talked about since January, which is student achievement for all students. I think the word all is important to me. That we're not singling out, you know, a certain group of students or. That remember, we have eighteen thousand students that all have different needs. Makes any sense for.
Yeah, I mean, it, it, it's, it's a question I struggle with, given all the challenges that we have in front of us and stuff that we're trying to do. Um, but Christina, I think you make a really good point. We always say that we want to be student focused and on student success. And I think having that be a goal of ours to not just say that we're thinking about it or state it, but then actually do the follow up and understand. As you thought, so whatever it is, master facilities plan, especially planner, what is student fees, right? Like, what is that when it comes to student success? And it, I, I feel if I look back in several months and say, hey, we are, we are communicating, we are evaluating based on student success. I think that's a really good goal because it can encompass a lot within that, but it does ground us and center us on what we state is our intention.
I guess I'm struggling with. What the goal can be that can have a tangible metric. And I think all of that work is important, that alignment piece that we said is critically important. And I honestly don't know how you kind of decouple. Alignment, rebranding, student success from one another. And the way for me to have the bigger hat is a strategic plan. Because then if we've achieved a strong, solid strategic plan by the end of the year. It's tangible. It's a, we did or we didn't. We're going to have metrics under that. And it's going to incorporate supporting all students, academic success, collaboration, branding, communication. So that for me would be a way to kind of bucket it all with a yes, no, finite success or.
How do we? But how do we? We're not going to have a strategic plan for quite some time.
Like, I thought it was a year ago, twenty five, twenty.
It's a year ago.
But what, but what about right now for us this year? And how do we couple all of that together?
I, I agree with you, but I, I guess for me it is to get that done within this year is my thought. So that's why I'm saying it's at the year old, but.
And I think, you know, the outcome.
Yeah.
When I think of that, that metric of culture, behavior, you know. Right? Our outcome is that strategic plan, adding that tangible, beautiful glossy document, whatever it looks like, as the outcome to think of our work. But I also heard from culture, Isaac is saying, what is our brand? What is our culture? How do we articulate that? How do we really put words to that? But then our behaviors is our collaboration and being student focused.
Right.
Right? So I really think they all, they all went together. So I will take, like, I'll take a stab at kind of writing that up. So that we can have that, you know, in our work, on the forefront of what we're working towards and what is the process to get us there. And that's really being clear in our collaboration about how we brand our work together. And that brand really has to be about student success. Right? And that all students are achieving. And then we're grounding our behaviors in that so that we can have a collaborative process to get to that strategic plan. So I think you're, I think Julie exactly what you said. They're all getting strictly bound. It's just which one is the outcome, which one is the behavior and which one is the belief. Right? And the brand is the belief, the behavior is the collaboration and the group work that we as a group and how we hold each other accountable. To get into that, that tangible strategic plan that we want to create. So I think making sure, um, you know, we talked about, um, superintendent and treasurer evaluation. But making sure that we have some opportunities to keep the pulse on each other about how our group works are going. How are we holding each other accountable? How is that collaboration going? So once I draft that goal up to, I'll kind of make some, about some papers, like, how can you make sure that we're engaging in good kind of dialogue continuously? Because retreats are great, but they can't be one and done, right? You gotta keep dipping, it's like the ice cream cone, keep dipping it in that chocolate shell, right? Or that strawberry shell. Um, so I think making some really intentional opportunities with us as a team. To get feedback from each other, maybe it's another retreat in the spring before we launch, you know, our work for a strategic plan. The building in those opportunities, along with those just kind of social, you know, communal events where we all judge other people. Um, so with that tomorrow, kind of coupling with that, uh, by the end of the week, we can get any, probably tomorrow, but by the end of the week, we can get any mail from me with a couple of things. One, you'll get your communication preference so that I can understand how you would like to be communicated with, whether it be face to face or you like actually putting writing or being a phone call person. Um, it'll also be an opportunity to be, making it look like it, to have kind of monthly check-ins with each of you, however that looks. You know, like I said, that could be a phone call, that could be a meeting, that could be, I'm good, just I'll touch base with you if I needed. Um, I'm going to include my little favorite things list in there because I want to know you as people. I mean, I know what animal you want and what gymnast you would be, and I feel like there's more to it than that, right? So I just want to get a little insight. I still, there'll be those kind of things. I want to connect base, I want to connect with each of you just to get a better picture. So how do you want to work together, not only as a group, but how do you want to work together as individuals and how much kind of cadence of interactions? Cause each of you like a different level of detail or presented in a different way. So I'll follow up with individuals and those two, they'll be the same content. So, um, but I just want to know those will be coming to get some more details from you, who is a board member. So thank you. I think it's been a really, really last couple, good couple of days and I'm super, super excited. For the work that we are going to do together. And next week is complication, students that are coming and there will be a palpable energy. I mean, just at the start of school, there always is, but I think we have a really awesome opportunity in the district to capitalize the positivity and momentum. And to get, to get everything going in the right direction.
Yeah, can I say something?
Yes.
So, um, like, I, I appreciate the summary. There's something that I, 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 I took away from today, which I also want to make sure to clarify. That, uh, we're all going to work together. We're all going to align. We're going to have individual alignments. But we must also ensure that we're not overstepping. If there's anything I want. And it's not every, everybody on the board must say. That does not mean that the person should not speak out and say, look, I disagree with this. And, uh, you, you've explained everything, but I know in my own professional or whatever it is, I understand. Does not mean I must. Does not mean I must agree that. With everybody because everybody said that you like this. That's where our individuality comes into play. And that's where the, this, the last paragraph, I mean, drawing that you have means to. So we all have to bring our strength. And we disagree to, and that's why we have to, that's why we bring growth. So rubber stamping is what I don't do. I believe in. Uh, agreeing, but if you can stand out against what I want, yeah, be free to say.
And I think we had a really good conversation. It's one of our executive team group norms, right? That dialogue is just that, right? Everybody's continuing to share it. And everybody needs to be heard and engaged in meeting or the conversation or whatever it may be. And I think on the group norms, your executive team, it's just, it's just speak now, right? Like, when we walk out of the room, it's important for everybody to know how everybody feels, whether that's agreement, whether that's disagreement. But when we walk out of that room, we know how each individual feels, will we carry that manner because the decision has been made regardless. And so I think, I think that's really important because we do have to know how everybody thinks and know why and their impetus behind their decision. Because it helps us think through the communication, the delivery, the questions that we get.
And that's on all of us.
Yeah. Butler tax norm is everyone speaks their truth. And I like that wording of it, but. And then again, they, it's accepted, respected in uniform.
Sure.
Um, what do we think? Again, just before we adjourn, of thinking about next year, and again, doesn't have to be a decision today. But when we do our work meeting next year, potentially looking at a quarterly retreat, not two days, but like. A half a day and that like helps some of that work, right? So just think about that, if that's something that people think would be valuable. It's something again. That has happened in the past and that has gotten away from, that allows people to kind of dive in.
We've had to work very hard on not losing the momentum of a retreat. That's something the treasurer's.
I feel like we, to Ashley's point, that this, we do wanna, uh, the spring as well. I don't think it's a one and done. I think we need a touch point. That's just me, but like I think that's. It shouldn't be a one and done. And if you work meeting, maybe it's at, here's our fall retreat, here's our spring retreat day. And I realize those could change or. I know spring's hard with everything at the end of the year. So maybe, but.
Right, yeah, that I was even suggesting more than twice a year.
Yeah.
Consider quarterly instead of, yeah, so.
It doesn't have to be as elaborate as.
Once a year says we're really good at this.
Yeah.
And I think we're still developing that.
Yeah.
Well, I think, given some of the things that we're talking about, like evaluations and giving feedback and stuff fits better within a retreat model.
Right.
Than. Board meeting.
Right.
So I think as we're talking about doing things differently, let's understand what the mechanisms are that enable that. And I think quarterly retreats could.
I like that too, yeah. Alright, so.
Alright, are we ready to adjourn? Do I have a motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
Any discussions? Thank you so much for everyone for investing the time and being here. So Adam, please call the board.
Ms. French.
Yes.
Ms. Casper.
Yeah.
Mr. Dean.
Yes.
Mr. Ward.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes. Thank you. So you were tech today.